I guess we're all here. Matt is going to join late, so welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today's the 20th of October 2020, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, hello, everyone. Would anybody like to start with any announcements?
Let me read the pre-meeting statement, please.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, and March 23rd order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by go to zoom.us/join, hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of your screen, type in the meeting ID of 822-3288-4425, and then enter the password 003512. Hit "Join." Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note to join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call-in telephone number is 646-558-8656, or by watching Public Access TV, Charter Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it will be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, it will be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
Thank you very much, Ed. Anybody have any announcements or words of gratitude or anything?
Well, a couple of things. I really appreciated the fact that so many people turned up for the special town meeting on Saturday, and thankful to all the people who organized that arrangement. You know, we had a similar success as the one, you know, in terms of the logistics as we did at our summer one. So maybe we should just offer outdoor meetings from now on. It's good.
And to add on to that, I think we were really lucky that the rain stopped when it did. I wouldn't have given you much choice of having, chance of having that meeting at maybe 4:00 a.m. when I looked out my window, but sure enough, Ed, the weather forecaster was right, and we were able to get it all together. So it was good. I'm glad we held it.
I'll tell you one thing, those outdoor meetings do a number to my heart and nervous system, worrying about the weather and everything coming off, and if it's going to have to be postponed or not, much more so than the indoor ones do. So I like the indoor ones.
And not only that, if we have any more, Robert and I worked really hard on getting those planes over for a second time in a row.
They did a great job. It worked.
Yeah, thank you all. And Robert or Tammy, would you like to add anything? Everybody did a great job. I think you might be muted.
Yeah, I am muted. Robert Floyd, 166 College Highway. I am very impressed with the town, with our planning committee, with everyone who showed up, the quality of the questions. I wouldn't even know if you would call it controversy, but they had a lot of questions. Everybody got answers. Amazing teamwork. And yeah, I agree with Ed. That was cutting it close with the anxiety of the rain. And wow, we did it. And that's over. And we'll go on and do other things. But the townspeople, they were watching the weather too, and they came, and that pretty much indicative more would have come if there was nicer weather. So it was pretty fabulous to get around 100 people or so on an October Saturday. So I want to thank everybody on the committee, the Select Board, and the town for showing what Southampton can do.
Anything, Tammy, you want to add? Nope. Yeah, thank you, Ed, as well. Any other comments about any?
Yeah, just one other thing. You know, the BYOB, the people who bring their own brush and paint the fence at the cemetery, I think that's a great effort. So just again, thank you.
Thank you very much. And actually, every time I go by there, it is an absolutely beautiful fence. I love that fence. I just wanted to say that Southampton is a beautiful town, and this time of year, it's incredibly beautiful. So I just hope that people get a chance to just experience it. I just, I'm in awe driving around this town. And I also wanted to ask Chris, is it because you're in a farm family that you're up at 4:30 in the morning?
Yeah, kind of. Your old habits are hard to break, you know?
Apparently. All right. If everybody doesn't have any, if nothing else, then we'll start right in. No, we have no appointments and resignations, although there are some PCFs relative to that. And then Select Board reports. Would someone like to begin?
Okay. All right, I'll go first.
Okay, go for it.
All right. Beginning with the October 8th meeting of the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board, on October 8th, we had an email meeting to approve PCFs that are on tonight's agenda, so we'll get to the specifics of that. We are having our regular Zoom meeting this Thursday, October 27th, where we're going to consider some, in addition to the PCFs we'll have before us, consider some carryover questions from our previous Zoom meeting, having to do with scoring the EMD position and a request for a salary increase from the Water Commission. We'll be taking those matters up. On October 7th, the CPC met. That was my first meeting with the new group as the new liaison from the Select Board. Obviously, we discussed the upcoming special town meeting and the article that they had before. Well, they had a role in the Parks Commission on the pickleball article. And, you know, we talked about how to provide information on funding projects. The other item that came up was getting ready to prepare the annual report to the town from the CPC and the call for project proposals for fiscal year '21. That will be coming out soon. We talked about alternative ways of getting the word out so that everyone is aware and has an opportunity to submit if they desire. And then finally, yesterday, the Bylaws Committee met after a very long hiatus. We updated our progress chart, and I have to express my sincere appreciation to Chris for putting together a spreadsheet and the status of all of the articles that we have been working on. So we caught up with all of that. Interestingly enough, of the 50 articles that we have, that we, you know, are, have or worked on or will continue to work on, five have passed town meeting and have been adopted. We have 10 still with the attorneys that the Select Board did review when we forwarded. We haven't heard back on those 10. We understand that there is, you know, a limit to the legal budget, and so what we're doing is we're going to prioritize the order in which we would like them to be reviewed by our attorneys so that we can start to get some momentum going with presenting, you know, three or four at each of the future town meetings. So we selected our three. I sent that information to Ed to pass on to the attorneys. We do have some articles that are outstanding with departments who have to review and boards that have to review and get back to us. So I'll be knocking on people's door again. And then finally, we have a number still in, that we have drafted that are going to different boards and committees for approval. So altogether, I think the chart shows just how much progress we have made. You know, we've, at least for our end of the work, completed about 32 of the 50. We're just trying to get, as I said, you know, a procedure in place that works, that we can gradually bring them forward to the Select Board and to the town. And I was trying to anticipate how long would it take, you know, with two or three meetings a year, if we did two or three articles a meeting, we're looking at, you know, a couple of years here before we finish up, so unfortunately. Unless we can figure out another way of expediting this process. So that's where we are with that. Thank you.
Can I ask you, how many members are there of the Bylaws Committee? Has it changed at all?
No, we still have four. There were three present. It was Chris Fowles, Virginia Ahart, Lucy Dalton was not able to make it, and myself. We have one vacancy. We have, you know, we've asked before, we'll ask again, for a volunteer from the community would appreciate the help. Thank you.
Okay. Robert has a question. Are you unmuted?
Yeah. Robert Floyd, 166 College Highway. I don't see the need to limit the number of bylaw articles for a future town meeting, even the Wetland Protection Act, which was probably the most controversial or would have more questions. We handled it very well. But the existing bylaw changes I see are not recreating the wheel. They're not as controversial, and I think we could cover quite a few in the next town meeting.
Yeah. Our dilemma really is, Robert, the fact that our legal budget for the attorneys to review it is limited. And so we have to kind, according to Ed, and I understand this, we have to pace ourselves because we have other matters that we have to put, bring forward to the attorneys over and above the bylaws, unfortunately. I mean, that's what, that's, I think, if I understand Ed correctly, I think that's one of the reasons that the pace is as it is.
Well, that's one of them, but don't also forget, you know, Robert just referred to basically recodification and tweaking our existing bylaws. The Bylaw Review Committee has both bylaws that they're looking to tweak or amend, but they also have some brand-new bylaws, and those brand-new bylaws, you know, maybe end up being controversial. And if you end up with, you know, two or three or four of those on a town meeting agenda, and we're still in COVID situation, it may be an issue.
Right. None of the ones that we have lined up, I would say the next 20 or so, are anything new. They're revisions of existing.
We could always pass the hat.
Tammy, would you like to say something?
Tammy, Willunis, 298 College Highway. Have we ever had two special town meetings? Like, if things got better and we were able to present more in January, February, before the May annual town meeting? Is that something that's ever been done?
Yeah, there's been years where there's been two specials.
Back-to-back?
Oh, no. No.
Well, but one in the fall and one in the winter, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wasn't, wasn't sure if we had ever done that.
Yeah.
The year.
Thank you.
Francine, anything else from your report?
No, that's it.
Okay. Anybody else like to report?
Yeah, I've got a few. I'll try to be quick here. Let me start out with the master plan. As I mentioned before, we have the survey results, and they will hopefully get posted on the website in the next day or two, before the end of the week anyway, so you all can take a look at the responses that came in from the 896 people that did submit the survey, complete the survey. And it shows not only the graphs of who responded, how they responded, not personally who, but how they responded, and the percentages of people responding to certain questions. And then there were places where there could be some narrative if they so choose, so chose. And we did do an illustrative selection of the comments that were given to us to just sort of show the variation of opinions. So that will be posted up on the website, and we will still be planning on a formal presentation to the Select Board and anyone else. Might be a joint meeting, I don't know, with Planning Board and Select Board. We'll have to figure that out. But somewhere within the first two meetings of November, we'll make that happen. Okay, so that's the master plan. The Board of Assessors met yesterday, and let me try to recap some of that. If you remember, we've been having a three-year, a triennial evaluation of our assessed values, and that has now moved to a quinquennial, a five-year, and this is the first time it's starting. And so this is the first revaluation that's just been completed by the folks that were doing that for us, and they found that our values will remain relatively the same in between each of the years, even when we were doing it on a three-year basis for the real reeval. Every year, there's been interim adjustments. So every year, there's been some adjustments that occur anyway. And given that has been done over the last three years, basically, the assessors are saying that there's no need to increase values to match market values. The state, from what I understand, the state requires towns and cities to have an assessment to sales ratio of somewhere between 90 and 110%. And last year, our ratio was 96%, and this year, we're at 95%. So basically, using the 2019 sales figures, that's what they came up with, and it looks like things are going to be basically very, very similar to what they were in the past. The third one, Open Space Committee met this week. Basically, some of the continued focus in terms of identifying potential lands of interest, talking about how we would approach landowners that might be interested in conserving their property, getting some further work done on that. So that's just a continuing process. Nothing special to report on that one. Let's see, where else am I? CONCOM also met, and as you know, we were able to get the wetlands bylaw drafted and passed through the special town meeting on Saturday, so we're all very grateful for that. And then, just to make an announcement, you recall that we've been talking about all the storm damage from a year ago down at Manhan Meadows? And we were going to be having some tree cleanup. Well, that is finally going to be happening, and it's going to be happening toward around the third week or so of November, where some of those seriously hanging trees, shall we say, on the paths need to be cut down. And so we've got a forestry company that's going to be coming in, and their landscape company, whatever they call themselves, to come in and do that removal. But ahead of that, it's very hard to get in there right now. It's very overgrown. So CONCOM is proposing a two cleanup Saturdays, one on October 24th and one on October 31st, from 10, from 11 to 2 o'clock. This will be down at Manhan Meadows down on East Street, and it's basically trying to clear the paths, especially of a lot of the invasives, to help make way for the tree removal. It's just really tough to get in there now. It's really grown up over this last year. So it's mostly cutting back the invasive. They're very, very thorny. So it's also pretty steep, and if it rains over the next few days, it's going to be very slippery. So they're going to be looking for volunteers that would like to help out on that, and so there'll be a call probably going out on Facebook, I imagine. But we would discourage probably young kids and dogs, just because this is not going to be an easy trail to get through and try to weed whack here. And recommending that anybody that would like to volunteer, just keep an eye out for notices about that on the community page or on our website, one or the other. I'm sure you'll hear about it. And anybody wanting to participate, plan on wearing thick gloves, jackets, and sturdy footwear, because it's really going to be kind of slippery probably. And certainly, don't forget a mask. CONCOM has some shears and brush cutter type things that they can loan people, but if you have your own preferred shears or weed whackers that you want to bring, you're more than welcome to do that. Again, anything that's useful for removing any kind of invasive plants, anything that is gas-powered, like maybe, I don't know, your weed whacker or chain, well, chainsaw, I don't know what anybody would bring, but anything that is fuel-powered needs to be filled off-site, that cannot be filled on the conservation property. So that's basically it. So the 24th and the 31st, from 11 to 2, looking for a chain gang to get out and do some serious weed whacking and invasive plant clearing so that we can then get the next step of getting those bad trees out of the way, and then maybe we can start opening that trail a little bit over the next few weeks. That would be nice. So that's CONCOM. And let's see, I think the last one, just briefly, we haven't really met, the grants, Ad-Hoc Grants Committee hasn't really met the last couple of weeks, but I've been participating in the meetings that Ed has been having with the town departments on the CARES Act requests. So we'll probably, in the next couple of weeks, we'll get back to maybe trying to have a grant meeting, but this CARES Act was the highest priority, so we haven't had any kind of separate meeting.
Okay. That is actually the next agenda item.
Okay.
So we'll come back to that, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
We also have on the agenda CARES Act funding.
Yes.
We'll discuss what, how that can happen.
Okay, yeah, I think that's all I, yep.
Thank you very much, and thank you. It's great to have a volunteer effort again to clear out the trail. Are they going to be doing East Street side or the Brickyard side?
I think they're probably starting on East Street.
Because the tree, one of the big, huge trees that's down is close to the beginning of the trail on the Manhan, on the East Street side.
Yeah. I think that's the worst part. Even when the landscape companies went in to look at it several months ago, there was that side that was really the worst damage, where the worst damage was after that microburst. Anyway, there's some down on the Brickyard side, but not anywhere as bad.
It's going to be fabulous to have the bridge fixed and everything else there.
Well, that'll happen with the Trails Grant. That'll be coming. This is the first step.
Right. That's great, though. That's a lot of good work. John, you have anything?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Finance Committee met last night. It's only the second meeting since the election, so there wasn't a lot on the agenda. But there was, everybody said went to the town meeting, really enjoyed it, thought it was a great process, and they're glad they're on the Finance Committee, and they see that as a way to link it back. But we spent a lot of time reviewing the expense reports, and Mary Siriak, who's the clerk, did a nice PowerPoint, and you can tell she's into the PowerPoints and the expense reports. So she's presenting them to everybody in a PowerPoint where you don't have to look on paper, and she did a great job. So I just wanted to compliment her on that. I think she's going to be a great clerk. They decided to meet on schedule the second Monday of every month, on a schedule at 5:30. And if they need to meet in additional time, we'll schedule it ahead of time, like Ed brought up. In case there's PCFs, PRFs come up, you can't wait for a month, so they will schedule it in between. But right now, it's the second Monday of the month. And they said they want to try to keep it to one hour per meeting, and Ed and I chuckled a little bit at that, so we'll see how that one goes.
Still looking for another member?
Yeah, I got that here, too. I can jump that. We're looking for one more member, but at the town meeting, three people approached me about joining. So I told them all, go ahead. One was a former member who wanted to come back on. So I asked them to go ahead with a email request, and it could be brought to the board. So hopefully, we'll get a fifth member pretty soon.
Excellent.
They were looking at putting liaisons with the CPC and the DQB. They discussed that, and a couple of people that are interested are going to go to the meetings and see what it's all about before they decide. And we had a long review of the committee's purpose and the process that we go through it, and I discussed that at length. And they had a lot of questions on the process, so we brought them up to date on that. They actually adopted a short mission statement that they'll be putting out, too. So that was interesting. But it seems like the four people on there are committed and very interested, so I think that's going to go well.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah, be nice. On the Planning Board side, we had a site visit last Thursday, which I believe was the 15th, at 32 High Street. It's the location where work was done prior to getting the stormwater drain permit. So the board wanted to go up there and actually walk the property. So we walked the property last Thursday, and they also did a redo yesterday to walk the property because a couple of people couldn't make it. It was interesting to listen to the folks as they described what was going on. Saying tomorrow, there's a Planning Board meeting, and there's two public hearings. One's on the 32 High Street property. They did submit a residential stormwater permit application, and the other one's on 89 Pleasant Street, which is another residential stormwater permit application. So anybody who's interested in either of those two properties, tune in tomorrow night at 7:00. Those are the two items I have.
And my update is an easy one, because neither the Council on Aging or the Board of Health has met. They did discuss, the Board of Health, I think, had a couple of emails and talked about meeting on the 20th, but did not schedule a meeting. So the next item on the agenda that actually is the town, actually, it's Ad-Hoc Grants Committee update. Chris, did you want to say anything or no?
Nothing really to report, Rainey. We'll get back on a schedule and try to meet after we get the CARES Act application out of the way, I think, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, so then the Town Administrative Report is next.
All right. The special town meeting was held this past Saturday, October 17th, at Labrie Field as a follow-up to the annual town meeting. Fortunately, the rains parted early around 7:00 a.m. and allowed the special town meeting to be held as planned. The meeting went off without a hitch, except for an occasional gust of wind. I'd like to give a great, big thank you to the planning team who put this together with careful thought toward health and safety. The planning team consisted of John Martin, Lucy Dalton, Charlie Kenecke, Ian Illingsworth, John Workman, Randall Kemp, Robert Floyd, Carl Keener, Jerry Swanson, and Tammy Willunis. Thank you all very much for a job well done. Lucy Dalton has let me know that she's received the letter of resignation from Matt Christie in his role as Water Commissioner. This will leave a vacancy in the Board of Water Commissioners. The Water Commissioners have notified me that there is a vacancy on the Board, and the Board of Water Commissioners and the Select Board should plan to have a joint meeting in the future to appoint a town-registered voter to that Board to serve until the next annual town election. And I'd also like to say thank you very much to Matt Christie for the years he spent on the Water Commissioner and the help and guidance that he was to that Board.
I'll second that. He came just a little short time ago to give us an update from the Water Department, and I believe he is no longer a resident of town.
Next, Crystal Kane from Buchanan Circle had written to the Board concerning the parcel of property on Madison Avenue, which the town owns and was taken from, within tax title, which she would like to purchase from the town. This parcel was taken in tax title, so it would be required to have a town meeting article for a vote to place the parcel in the control of the Select Board if you wanted to dispose of it as surplus property. The Board had requested that I investigate the note further on the property record card, which noted that the Planning Board had deemed this parcel not a buildable lot in 2006. We checked in with the Planning Board Chair, who was not on the Planning Board back in 2006. He has confirmed that this parcel, which has a 3,928 square feet to it, is still not a buildable lot, as it does not have the required 40,000 square feet of property that is required in that zone to build on.
Did you say it had 3,900 square feet?
30,928. Must be that same thing of an F-550 to an F-150, John.
I don't know. Chris heard it, too.
Maybe I did, then.
I heard 3,000.
Okay, then my mouth and my eyes were not aligned. My apologies.
That's what I did, yeah.
Exactly. So, you know, that'll become whatever the Board wants to do as a follow-up on that parcel. But like I say, I did reach out to Paul Deeman, and he has confirmed that it's still not non-buildable. The town has been impacted by the national security breach of information, which has led to an extraordinary amount of unemployment claims. Genday Treasurer Collector has confirmed that 14 town employees Gen Day Treasurer Collector has confirmed that 14 town employees and volunteers have had fraudulent unemployment claims filed in their names against the town. Our neighboring communities have also been impacted by these fraudulent claims, and this is due to a national security breach of information and is not due to a breach which was either on the state level or the town level. Then I'd like to remind our residents that the Water Commissioners have put into place voluntary water restrictions. A, eliminate all nonessential water use and no outdoor automatic sprinkler use between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, seven days a week. B, please restrict outdoor water usage to no more than two days per week. We hope this will result in a reduction in water use. If not, the Water Commissioners will have to consider implementation of mandatory water restrictions. We thank you in advance for helping us conserve and protect our water supply. Let's see. And I'd like to also remind our residents and businesses that the Southampton Water Department will be conducting our Southwest area water system flushing program, which started on Wednesday, October 7th, and it'll be running through mid-November 2020. During this time, the Water Department will make every effort to minimize system disruption. However, you may experience pressure fluctuations and some discolored water during the flushing process. If dust coloration occurs, running the cold water for a short duration should clear it up. If the problem persists, please feel free to contact the Water Department at 413-532-4249, or email watersuper@townofsouthampton.org. We apologize in advance for any inconvenience that this may cause. The Water Department thanks you for your cooperation and understanding during this important maintenance process. And then Marla Hank Conservation Commission Chair reached out and sent me an email today. The Conservation Commission has requested that the Select Board consider and approve the addition of a $300 per offense fine to the Conservation Commission fee schedule. This amount is common to many other towns in the area, and the other fees on the schedule would stay the same, and they already exist. So I will put that together and get it to the Select Board for the next meeting. Then upcoming Select Board meetings coming up, November 5th and the 17th.
Thanks, Ed. Any questions, Fred?
Just a question on that CONCOM $300 fee. Should we talk a little about it now before he brings it up as an official, for an official vote? Because otherwise, we could torpedo it then with a bunch of questions, so.
Sure, whatever you'd like.
So do you know much detail? Is that, what kind of offense is that for? First offense, second offense, and all that? Or do we not have that detail?
I don't have that detail. The way it would appear to me would be per offense, whether that's the first, second, third, or what have you, but.
Let me try to chime in. I'm not positive I'm right, but Dan is listening in, he can chime in. Usually, if there's any kind of a potential violation, especially as it's related to the wetlands by law, CONCOM tries to work with the landowner to remedy that. You know, they try to work out a plan and figure out how they can make the situation better and work together to do that. When and if there is really no response to that on the part of the property owner, or the work agreed upon is taking a long time, at some point in time, CONCOM can put out an enforcement order to really make that a bit stronger in terms of their level of seriousness, I guess I would say. But once again, once those enforcement orders are issued and there is no substantial progress, there is no seemingly improvement of the situation, then CONCOM is able to enforce that with a fine.
Okay, so that makes a lot of sense. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, they saw something, $300 fine, boom, you know?
No, no, this would be, this would be like, this would be like the strategy of last resort, shall we say.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Chris.
And then also.
Pardon?
Sorry, Rainey. Just wanted to remind the Select Board that it would take anywhere from probably four to 12 weeks for the Attorney General to review that bylaw and get back to us with its approval. So the fee technically would not go into effect until at least that's been approved by the AG, and the town has received it, and we have posted it for people to know about.
Any other questions about the proposed CONCOM fee?
I guess my question is, I understand that it's per offense, but how long of a period of time do you give people to remediate or after they pay the fine? Or do they just come back and pay another fine and continue to do what they were doing?
Well, I think, I think the idea is the fine is after trying to work with them to remediate the situation, and the fine per offense, I mean, the fine is actually, to be clear, my understanding is the fine is $300 per day.
Okay, that makes a difference. Thank you.
Usually, whether it's 50 bucks, 200 bucks, 500 bucks per offense, yeah, usually the fence in these cases are considered per day.
Right, and so this was intentional, and it's comparable to towns around us. They've done the research with other towns and the enforcement orders and fees that they have in place. And the intent truly is, if you've got somebody who's not wanting to cooperate and do the required work to protect the land, then this should get their notice, you know?
Yeah, I think $300 a day would do that, yes. Good, thank you.
Hopefully, it doesn't get to that. I think they said over the last five or six, or even maybe longer, they've only had two or three cases that would even get to this level. So it's a really rare occurrence. Most landowners are very willing to work with CONCOM, and CONCOM is certainly available to help them understand what the issues are and, you know, try to figure out a mutually agreeable plan and a way forward. So this was really a situation of last resort, where they would even have to think about a fine.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ed? I just have two things, Ed. One is, Ed just sent out an email that talked about, I'm not sure, because it just came across, about the distinction between at what point the Water Department would issue a mandatory water restriction, and then the trigger for a voluntary one. So that's in everybody's email, I think. Thank you for.
Yeah, one of the board members had asked me about that, so I thought it more appropriate to send the response out to the entire board than just back to the one individual.
Yep, that was helpful. And the other thing is, does the Select Board want an agenda item for the land on that the resident asked about purchasing? Do you want to put that on, us to put that on as an agenda item?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, sure. That's Crystal Kane. Now, Ed, did you write back to Crystal Kane and just let her know that we were looking into it and?
Yeah, and in fact, actually, before I had gotten the response back from Paul Demon, I had exchanged emails with Crystal again early this morning, just letting her know that there was still one item that the board had asked me to investigate on that, but we were getting closer. So I will reach out again and let her know we have that response, and the board will be discussing how they would like to proceed with it.
Okay, sounds good.
And with that, in terms of the assessed value of the property, too, could you give us a figure with that information next time?
Next time, yeah.
My memory is it's like between 20 and 21,000, but I will, I can confirm that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yep. Rainey, could I add one small thing I forgot? For, back on CONCOM for a second, sorry, guys, I forgot this, but just to note that apparently pheasant season has started, and there's hunters out on the Zip-Tec Conservation property. So if you're out walking the trails, wear some orange so that you can be easily identified or more easily identified. So just a note, and that's only walkable property, you cannot drive down there. You can park on the road, on Glendale Road, but not down in there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much for.
And I'm dressed for the occasion.
Yep, yeah. Bright orange.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
So then we'll move on to old business. The first is 93 College Highway Purchase and Sale Agreement. We just got an email from Ed that the butter is going to sign the right of first refusal, and so there is a date for closing. If I remember correctly, it's November 10th.
Yeah, what Katie and Klein and I had talked about, and we don't know if it's acceptable to the Fletcher's or Attorney Penny at this point. We know that they're anxious to close. The board's next meeting is due to the election being on Tuesday, it'll be on Thursday, the 5th, and the Select Board would have to sign the deed. So we thought about, you usually need maybe four days or so after that to, that meeting to get everything together, to actually do the closing. And we had actually originally thought about the 10th to the 11th, we were going to go for Wednesday, the 11th, and I remembered that was Veterans Day and a holiday, so we thought about the 10th. We'll wait to hear back and make sure that that is acceptable to the Fletcher's and Attorney Penny. Since we don't have the signed waiver of right of first refusal, which is notarized in hand, but Mr. Hackworth has promised us that he will get that to us by the end of the week. If the Select Board would like to move forward with the purchase and sale, what I would suggest to them would be to, if you're going to do a motion to accept it and also to sign it, that it be a conditional motion that we do that, but the condition of the motion be that we actually do receive the notarized, signed waiver of the right of first refusal from Troy Hackworth before we actually do move forward.
Okay, so there's a clean copy of the purchase and sale in the packet. Does anybody have any questions about it?
Just one clarification. I remember the last time we talked, there was the issue on the drainage easement, I think the word identical, we were going back and forth. So identical's left in, there's an asterisk, and there's a little paragraph below. So was that approved by our KP Law?
This, yes, what you have in front of us is the agreement that both Attorney Klein and Attorney Penny agreed to. I had given Attorney Klein, who was our town council for this, the direction that the Select Board had given to me to relay, that as long as what was in that purchase and sale agreement, Attorney Klein could recommend to us, the board should be good with that.
So Attorney Klein recommended this, like what you're saying?
Yes, well, I won't say that she recommended it, but she is acceptable and would be, how would you say it, recommend it to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Francine, do you have a question?
No, that was the one, I wanted to make sure that this was the version that they both agreed to, that it wasn't something that still had to go back. So I heard that, thank you.
Yeah, and also Mrs. Fletcher, I see, is on the Zoom meeting this evening.
So I think our issue was, we wanted all parties to agree, and what you're saying, and all parties agree to it now, and Mrs. Fletcher's out there, she's muted, but if she shakes her head yes, then we know.
She can unmute herself.
Oh, she can? Okay.
Yeah.
Hi Cheryl, how are you?
I'm good. I'm glad to hear about the right of first refusal. So yes, that's, we just want to close, we don't want to jeopardize the grant. I think that the rewording on paragraph two is fine, so we could get this thing done.
Yeah, moving forward. Could someone like to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, we accept the purchase and sale agreement as approved by our legal counsel and the Fletcher's and their legal counsel.
Ending the receipt of a notarized right of first refusal?
From the Hackworths, yes. Thank you.
John's motion, any second?
Second.
Who's that?
Any further discussion?
I think the only harvest you're going to get, Cheryl, is the snow harvest this season, but.
Well, the engineers are coming out the first week in November, so at least if we know that there's a closing in place, we can move ahead, because we do want to do some preliminary stuff before the snow flies, so all good.
And you think the 10th will work on your side? Cheryl?
Hey, all those in favor?
Tishman, I.
All's abstained.
Art, nigh.
And Groden, I. Thank you. Ed, could you just keep me posted on the closing?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, and is there documents that need to be signed, or should it be after the right of first refusal paperwork comes in?
We can sign it, I will just hold on to it till we have the right of first refusal, and then I can move that along. And then, like I say, at the meeting on the 5th, the board will have to vote to sign the deed, and then I will have to get that to you for your actual wet signatures.
Okay.
So you want us to come in this week to sign this purchase and sale, Ed?
Either that, or, you know, it's not convenient for you, let me know when you might be around, and I can have it either myself or someone else bring it around for your signature.
All right.
And let us know when it's ready.
Thanks, thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you, wow.
Doors Grant. Green Communities Grant?
Oh, yes, we're still working with that audit, Energy Audit Company that Eversource hooked us up with, so they've been out and done their assessment of the town buildings, and I'm still trying to get a few of the energy bills they're looking for together from the department heads to send along to them.
Okay, so I understand that you had actually taken them around to a lot of different buildings, and so the plan is to come up with cost savings, and then there's 136 or something thousand dollars available to us once we could sort of prove cost savings through lighting or other kinds of energy means, correct?
Yeah, it could be lighting, could be weatherization of, you know, sealing up doors and windows, might be through change of heating or air conditioning units, although the fellow that was out from the Energy Audit Company explained to me that, in general, there is a much better chance of showing savings of an upgrade grade to heating units, which are oil-fired versus natural gas-fired. So that will limit some of our buildings, but they are looking at all that, and we'll see how we can best utilize the funds to not only improve our energy use and save us dollars, but to reduce the town's carbon footprint as well.
Good, and that deadline for getting all that together is when?
For this information, the sooner the better. We're not really on a deadline. We can submit that to DOER at any time, but I'd like to get it back to them, say, in the next four to six weeks, just for, so that DOER can take a look at it, say what they, you know, would accept and maybe what they won't. And from there, we can actually work with that Energy Audit Firm to figure out, okay, which projects we're going to move forward with and how much they may cost to stay within that $138,000. to move forward with and how much they may cost to stay within that 138,000 parameter that we already have.
I think it froze up, Ed. Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure that, you know, it's money in the bank. We got to get it together and submit it so that we don't lose it.
Yeah. And 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 once we've actually utilized that, and we can show that, hopefully that we've reached our 20% energy savings goal, there are other grants that will be able to be eligible for to apply for for further energy savings from DOER.
Great. Any questions about that? Anybody have any questions? Nope. Okay, then next on the agenda is the special town meeting. Any further comments or follow up?
Well, I I'm going to say that I was disappointed in the one article that did not pass on the computers for town hall. But I did take a so, you know, I guess we need to understand what the plan is to use the existing money that we have, the $8,000 that was referenced, and go forward from there.
And and the first step is hopefully the we will be eligible to fund the laptops and docking stations for the department heads through the CARES Act. That's the first step. And and as long as that's the case, we'll be in decent shape. If that isn't the case, then yeah, we're back at square one. And of the $8,000, actually, one PC has already been replaced. So there's about $6,500 left there.
Okay.
So they said we're up plan, Ed, to spend that 6,500? I mean, do you have quotes, specs, and all that on these?
Yeah. And but what I'm, my intention at this point with those will be, let's find out from the state and the federal government if we are eligible to utilize CARES Act funding for the laptops for the department heads. Because if they aren't, or we aren't, then I would still put the department heads at the top of the list to get what we have for funding in desktops.
Did we ask for this in the first round of the CARES money?
No, we did not.
Yeah, I saw it. I saw it on the second, on CARES Act 2. I saw that that application, the budget outline, and it's there.
Yeah. And Ed, just a follow up question. I think on some webinar or something I was following at one point in time, there's apparently people that are kind of like the Mima, I don't know, liaisons, or people that you can ask questions to. Every town or various towns have got somebody you can call and just say, does this qualify? So do we have that person? And we can contact?
I have that contact information.
Okay, great. Because then we don't have to spin our wheels if we if it doesn't get approved already. Yeah.
No, there's there's a few of the items which are on the phase two request list that i- in my mind, either probably aren't eligible or fall into that gray area that we'll need some guidance on. So yeah, I won't just ask about the laptop. There's a few few other items I'm going to ask some questions about, too.
Yeah, it's good. It's good that the state has put, you know, a rep available to the towns to ask these questions, too. It's kind of complicated.
Yeah, and and that was something that was, you know, fairly new of probably, I don't know, maybe three or four weeks ago, I think.
So another question, I guess because I was I was disappointed we didn't get that passed. It was it was our own fault for not getting it passed. So because we wanted desktops for certain people in the town hall or highway department, wherever, are they operating with systems that are so slow that it's impeding their work now, and we should go ahead and spend that $6,500 to upgrade specific people so that they be much more efficient, rather than waiting until we can approve from the CARES Act? Because if we don't get money from the CARES Act, the second round, and we have another special town meeting, we can go to that special town meeting, say, we need some more money, we already spent the money from fiscal '20, and we won't have that problem again. It just seems like we need to buy for the people who really need it now and not let it drag out for a couple more months.
Well, it's a little more complicated than that. Number one, like I said, like I say, if we can't get the laptops, I'd still use these for at least the department heads. And the other piece of the puzzle is, if you're going to do a if you're going to go into a department that has three people in it or two people in it, especially in the finance area, you're better off doing that whole department than just one of those units just for the compatibility issues.
Yeah, agreed. But I guess sitting on it is, I'm just worried that we don't have the best tools for our people to use where we have money to buy them. That's all.
Right. And like I say, I am I am hopeful that we will be allowed to utilize the CARES Act funding for the laptops with the docking stations in this case, because, yeah, there is a possibility that we may have to operate town hall remotely again, even for the employees. So I I've got my fingers crossed. I hope that works out, because then everything will fall together.
Yeah. So assuming that the CARES Act is favorable toward us doing that, then that still leaves 6,500 to be reprogrammed somehow? I mean, who's you mentioned that one had been upgraded already, one computer? Which which department had an upgrade?
The highway department superintendent needed to upgrade upgrade his.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So if if CARES approves these, then how would we use the 6,500 that still remains?
Then I would take a take a look at those individuals that have desktops that we'll be replacing with desktops that are not department heads, and then reprogram that $6,500 to replace those units.
Gotcha. Okay.
Is that ultimately part of the plan in terms of replacement? Eventually, we'll get to those people, because those tools are just as important to them as they are to the department heads.
Yeah, the the idea, the idea going into this was that we would replace all of the computers, because most of them were five to seven years old, in a period of roughly oh, split up or in a period of like, two to two and a half years. Just so the next time we had to replace them or needed to replace them, you could do them like in like in thirds. So that was that was always the plan, that everybody's PC would get replaced.
Okay.
Actually, this is a, you know, under the agenda item of special town meeting. Does anybody else have any other questions or follow up from the town meeting? We have a couple more technology items on the agenda coming up. Okay. Okay, then the next thing is the Halloween guidance. So our public health department and emergency management and police did issue a guidance for Halloween. It was reiterating the DPH requirements that the, well, actually, I mean, the governors relative to social distance and mask and hand washing. And also, the guidance also spelled out the minimum moderate and high risk activities that CDC had spelled out. And I know that the select board last time voted to just go with the guidance that the police and fire or police and public health put out. So can that document be uploaded onto our website, Ed?
It already is. And if the board is willing, one of the reasons I put it back on the agenda was, I'd like to read the document so that anybody watching tonight or that views the recorded version of this can actually hear what it says.
It'll be fine. Thanks.
You're welcome. Tips for a safe and healthy Halloween from your emergency management team, fire department, police department, public health, and EMD. All Halloween activities must comply with Governor Baker's COVID-19 orders. Mass Department of Public Health. As a reminder, the following COVID-19 prevention and mitigation standards apply to all activities in Massachusetts, including Halloween activities. Residents should adhere to each of the following. Wear a face mask or face covering. For more information on face masks and face coverings, please use the state's Mask Up Mask webpage. Observe good hand hygiene, including hand washing and use of alcohol-based sanitizers with at least 60% alcohol. Carry a hand sanitizer and use it often, especially after coming into contact with frequently touched surfaces and before eating candy. Refrain from touching your face. Stay home and refrain from Halloween activities, including handing out Halloween treats if you feel unwell, you have tested positive for COVID-19, you have been exposed to someone with COVID-19, or you have traveled to or from a state that is not classified as lower risk within the last 14 days. For more information on lower risk states, please see the state's COVID-19 travel order webpage. Maintain social distancing of at least six feet of physical distance from all other participants who are not members of the same household. CDC guidance for Halloween. Many traditional Halloween activities can be high risk for spreading viruses. There are several safer alternative ways to participate in Halloween. If you may have COVID-19, or you may have been exposed to someone with COVID-19, you should not participate in in-person Halloween festivities and should not give out candy or trick or to trick-or-treaters. Lower risk activities. These lower risk activities can be safe alternatives. Carving or decorating pumpkins with members of your household and displaying them. Carving or decorating pumpkins outside at a safe distance with neighbors or friends. Decorating your house, apartment, or living space. Doing a Halloween scavenger hunt where children are given lists of Halloween-themed things to look for while they walk outdoors from house to house admiring Halloween decorations at a distance. Having a virtual Halloween costume contest. Having a Halloween movie night with people you live with. Having a scavenger hunt style trick-or-treat search with your household members in or around your home rather than going house to house. Moderate risk activities. Participating in one-way trick-or-treating where individually-wrapped goodie bags are lined up for families to grab and go while continuing to social distance, such as at the end of a driveway or at the end of a yard. If you are preparing goodie bags, wash your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds before and after preparing the bags. Having a small group outdoor open-air costume parade where people are distanced more than six feet apart. Attending a costume party held outdoors where protective masks are used and people can remain more than six feet apart. A costume mask for Halloween is not a substitute for a cloth mask. A costume mask should not be used unless it is made of two or more layers of breathable fabric that covers the mouth and nose and doesn't leave gaps around the face. Do not wear a costume mask over a protective cloth mask, because it can be dangerous if this costume mask makes it hard to breathe. Instead, consider using a Halloween-themed cloth mask. Going to an open-air one-way walk-through haunted forest where appropriate mask use is enforced and people can remain more than six feet apart. If screaming will likely occur, greater distancing is advised. The greater the distance, the lower the risk of spreading a respiratory virus. Visiting pumpkin patches or orchards where people use hand sanitizer before touching pumpkins or picking apples, wearing masks is encouraged or enforced, and people are able to maintain social distancing. Having an outdoor Halloween movie night with local family, friends, with people spaced at least six feet apart. If screaming will likely occur, greater distancing is advised. The greater the distance, the lower risk of spreading a respiratory virus. Lower your risk by following CDC's recommendations on hosting gatherings or cookouts. Higher risk activities. Avoid these higher risk activities to help prevent the spread of the virus that causes COVID-19. Participating in traditional trick-or-treating where treats are handed to children who go door to door. Having trunk-or-treat where treats are handed out from trunks of cars lined up in large parking lots. Attending crowded costume parties held indoors. Going to an indoor haunted house where people may be crowded together and screaming. Going on hayrides or tractor rides with people who are not in your household. Using alcohol or drugs which can cloud judgment and increase risky behaviors. Traveling to a rural fall festival that is not in your community if you live in an area with community spread of COVID-19. And these guidelines are posted on the town's website homepage. And then I'll just, as Maureen had done earlier, I'll just remind everyone that basically, this town and the select board has adopted a policy that trick-or-treat trick-or-treating is not a a town-sponsored event. It, you know, it is almost a holiday. And we've looked at it as we don't have the right to totally ban trick-or-treating, and we also have no enforcement ability to ban or limit it.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions, anyone? Be safe out there, everyone. The next item is new business. There's two items. One is IT status updates, and the other one is the Technology Committee proposal by Dan Lavelle, who's on the call. Do you want to say anything more about the IT status update before I turn it over to Dan in his PowerPoint presentation?
Sure, I'll just give you give you a little update. We have gone gone through, I met with the finance departments on their schedules between now and the end of the year because of scheduling PC replacements in those departments. We do don't know, don't want to necessarily interrupt either tax bills going out, or some other items that are, you know, coming up and getting ready for the tax bills, which go out the end of December. Some of the other bills are going out the beginning of December. So one of the pieces of if we are eligible to use the CARES Act funding to do the laptops with the docking stations, the laptops are scarcer or in or in higher demand. So they take four to six weeks to obtain, whereas desktops are in the two to four week, you know, category. So I spent most of the end of the last week and the beginning of this week looking at the parameters and the specs on how to do the laptops. And so with that in mind, I'm going to revisit in this next week of the possibility of how we would be able to bring in the new server and convert people over to that department by department at a at a time without interfering with them. Since most, it looks at this point in time that if we are able to do the laptops for the department heads, at least the finance departments, we wouldn't want to swap those PCs out for the laptops until probably the beginning of January.
But the server will be in when?
Well, that's what I'm going to go find out in this next week, because originally, after that department head meeting where people had stated that they'd rather have their PCs replaced first, I backed off that. So now that we know that at least probably almost half of the units here in town hall for PCs, we won't want to swap out to beginning of January, I'm going to see what we can do to get that server in here in the next three to four weeks. And like I say, with the server, we can keep the old one going for some of the departments and swap over to the new one department at a time.
Okay.
But that wouldn't stop us from maybe procuring the laptops that you're talking about now, right? If there's going to be a four to six week lead time?
I would not procure the laptops until CARES Act says absolutely, we've accepted your application. So.
Don't we have money left over from your from phase one, that we could reprogram to buy them or no? I mean, couldn't we do that? I mean, do we have to wait for the next tranche of money, I guess is my question? I mean, do we have to wait for the next tranche of money, I guess is my question?
I would, I mean, at that point, if we know we're getting them, we could start on the desktop replacement for those people with the $6,500 that's left. And then utilize, like I say, the four-to-six-week timetable takes us into the beginning of December. I would still order them as soon as we've got the go-ahead from, you know, the state and the federal government. And even if they're, you know, sitting around for a couple of weeks, they'd be ready to be installed beginning of January.
Okay. So, is there still that requirement that December 31st is the cutoff date for using these funds?
December 30th, yes.
Well, that doesn't leave, I mean, all this time to get the equipment, we have to have it in-house, is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, wow. It's going to be tight.
It'll be tight.
But that's why, if we have this BEMAR rep, I mean, that's somebody that we could find out earlier on in terms of whether, even if we hadn't planned for them in the first round, knowing that we have this big pot of money, can we not start procuring them?
Yes.
You know, I don't know. I mean, it's a question, I guess, that Ed will have to ask, but, I mean, you're right. I mean, the lead time is going to be tough, and we do have to have them in hand, so.
Right.
Well, like I said, John's comment earlier about getting the, spending the $6,500, which is part of FY '20, and also the server's just been kicked down the road a lot here. And I appreciate that the staff want to go ahead and get the replacement PCs first, but I think that, I think it just feels like this has just been on their agenda for like a year. And I just feel like we need to, we need to keep moving on these things. So, does anybody have any other comments before we hear from Dan? Okay. Dan, thanks so much for your email and for your coming here and putting together presentations. Did everybody get a chance to, are you going to put it up on the, are you going to put Well, Dan, would you like to just say hello and introduce yourself?
Oh, hey, yeah, Dan Lavelle, 17 Glendale Road. So, you know, I was thinking and talking to some of my friends, and I came to the realization that one, one thing that we're lucky in Southampton to have is a lot of really smart, techy people. And it's kind of like, it's interesting in our rural, rural community that we have so many people with tech jobs or previous technology experience. So, that kind of led me to think, thinking, well, you know, maybe there's a way that those people could help the town. So, it's kind of what spurred this whole idea of, well, maybe, maybe I'll put this together, this proposal for a technology committee to, to help you all as the select board and the department heads and town administration, everybody working together to try to, try to get better utilized the technology capabilities that are available today. So, what I'm proposing is, you know, if forming some type of ad hoc committee that consists of volunteer residents who are currently working in or have worked in the information technology field.
Do we, do we not have the PowerPoint? You mentioned a PowerPoint.
I do have...
Do you have, you have the capability, Ed, of putting that up? I think we were just listening to Dan, so.
I don't because I'm not in my office, so I'm not connected to the network and the server.
Can I share my screen? Maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, just do that.
Just to let you know, and I think John would know this also, that when I first joined the select board, there was a plan to have a technology committee, and Kim Florrick from the high school had also appeared to be part of the committee. I think that was tough to drum up people that were willing and interested in doing that. So, that was part of the plan, actually, about three to four years ago.
You know, what's been interesting is I've actually, so I kind of, I kind of backed away a little bit last night, and you might have seen that email where I said, you know, I don't want to overload my plate. And within five minutes afterwards, three or four people emailed me and were like, hey, when are we going to talk about this technology committee? So, there are people I've already made contact with who I think have the right skill sets and can help. I think I can identify a group of seven already that are kind of, have different types of skills that fit together to make the right team. My question is, can you see my screen?
I can.
Yeah.
Great, okay. So, instead of just reading off the screen, yeah, you can kind of see what I was talking about. You know, so really talked about pulling together town residents to act as an advisory group to help where we can. So, some of the areas that I was thinking this group can focus on is looking at the computing servers, the networking technology that we're using, the data storage. Look at cloud-based solutions versus locally-based solutions in different offices to see if, what's the right match for Southampton. Also, looking at the use of the Wi-Fi, ensuring that the single strengths and weaknesses throughout different buildings in the town are sufficient for the use. Really, I think part of it is, you know, long ago I was an IT person, and it comes down to the user and talking to the user and understanding what are their needs, you know, what, getting together that list of computer inventory and understanding what are the specific software tools and creating, you may already have these things, and I apologize if I'm saying things you've already done because, well, you know, I've only, I've only heard some conversations, so just forgive me if I'm saying things you've already done. But pulling together that master list of all the computers and what state, age, state, and point they're at in their life cycle. Talking about cybersecurity, I think is a big one. I know that you mentioned earlier in your talk that the government had a compromise in data information, private data information. It's happened to me through, so I've had my data compromised, and it can be, it can be rough. So, ensuring some of the members of the team who have, some of the potential members of the team have, who have talked to me are cybersecurity specialists, so that could be helpful. Looking at it from the disaster preparedness perspective, you know, these are typical information technology perspectives. You look at it to say, well, like you go through, oh, well, in the event of a pandemic, what, how can we still operate? How do we, how are we prepared for these disaster scenarios? And then evaluating communication tools. I know, I know we have a town website. Maybe there are other technologies and other ways to get information out to the residents of the town using technology. And, you know, maybe, maybe there's other things besides a website that we can look into. I know that there has been talk of, at least I watched one select board meeting where you had met with, I believe it's the people from Westfield who do fiber to the home. But I know that there may be a growing interest in that service, being able to provide that service. So, there are people in our community who do that type of thing for a living, so they could, they could help in terms of helping, ensuring that the people who are proposing these projects are, we can keep them honest. And then another thing is always good is providing training classes for town members to help educate and people who may not be so familiar with computers and want to learn a new skill, perhaps get some training on some maybe Microsoft Word, Microsoft Office products, things like that. And all this wraps in together, I think, with looking at where would the funding come from? And with every, every, every group I've noticed for the town, it's about what types of grants apply and trying to look for those grants that we may not have pursued before to go after a better set of technology for town. So, some benefits, just reliable, consistent technology among town buildings and users, trying to reduce the costs, some of the things that can be solved without having to go to an outside vendor. So, some of these volunteers may be able to fix things before we have to pay the outside vendor to do some of the work. And then again, you get this, you get this group and this centralized point of contact for decision-making. Townspeople can use it as a service to go to when they want for help. It could be a way to utilize and save costs. So, if this were a group that you all thought was reasonable, I think we'd be looking to put together about five to seven residents with technology experience, people have those job sets on their resume, people who are retired or currently working in the industry, people with hardware, fiber, cyber, different skill sets, those are the skill sets that we'd kind of be looking for with the guidance that, you know, that have technology experience, obviously no conflicts of interest in their Southampton residence. And I would point out, like I said before, I personally, well, I see this as, this group to be able to help the town, I don't necessarily want to lead this group. I have, I'm, as you may know, I've taken a lot of responsibility, and I don't want to overwhelm myself. But I do want to, I did want to present this concept so that, and, and I know people in town, so I can help form it, but as far as running it, I think really, one of the members, we probably want someone with more of a managerial experience for that type of role. So, what would the next steps be? I guess we're kind of looking for permission to form a type of ad hoc group to, and assign a select board member or town official as a team member as oversight, as we try to work through this.
As a fish.
One thing also, I think I have to do a little bit of investigating into ensuring there's no state regulations governing IT systems. I did a little bit, and it sounded like they really leave it up to the municipalities to make a lot of the decisions as to how they structure their, their computer infrastructure. Obviously, talk about recruiting volunteers, a time commitment, trying to meet every two weeks, and finalizing a charter, mission statement, planning goals, and get all that together and get back to you, the select board, by the end of the year would be our goal. So, yeah, I just kind of said a lot of words.
Yeah, incredibly generous, and I think it's wonderful, I mean, to have, we have so many talented people in town, and, you know, you've done a lot to sort of generate a lot of volunteers on social media and such. So, just want to give the select board an opportunity first to discuss, ask questions, that sort of thing. And so, would anybody like to comment on his presentation and/or have questions?
Hey, Dan, can you take the screen down so we can see everybody?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, one moment.
That's okay.
I should, the share should have stopped.
Thank you.
Chris wanted to say something?
No, I mean, I think this is an interesting idea. I mean, I, you know, I think there are a lot of talented people in town, and there's people that, you know, don't necessarily get involved or don't think that they have the knowledge or the skills or something, and just sort of shy away from volunteering. But sometimes you just have to reach out and ask and make an opportunity available. And I think we get surprised by the level of volunteerism that may exist. And I'm sure that we've got a wide range of expertise within town, as Dan said, either currently working or even retired folks. I mean, a lot of people have moved to Southampton that must come here for a reason that, that could be useful to us. So, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to hear what other people think about it.
I guess I'd like to add, I mean, even if this group with this expertise had oversight over any company that we would hire to do any work for us, I think would be as opposed to you each individually coming in and, you know, and performing some of the work yourselves. I don't know how possible that is, you know, on timelines that we have to have things completed and so forth. But certainly the expertise for oversight would be great. You know, I think I was stopped dead in my tracks on the Westfield Fiber Optics when they said the price tag was $4.4 million. So, I mean, if you folks can find ways around, you know, help us achieve some cost savings so that we can get that kind of technology out to the residents, that would be wonderful. And I wouldn't expect that you would do it.
No, no.
Guiding it, yes.
Yeah, no, and it's sort of like, like, say you're going to buy a car, right? You know, if you're not exactly maybe experienced in cars, not a mechanic, you go there in the car salesman and says, oh, it's going to be $45,000, you know, is like, is that a fair price? I don't know. But if you are a mechanic, you'll go, hey, wait a minute, you know?
Yeah, understand, that's sort of what would be an advantage to having this kind of an advisory group.
I mean, I think there is some great short-term and long-term benefit for this group. I mean, short-term, we just talked about, we've got a server that we're waiting to be installed, we've got laptops, we've got PCs that need to be specced, and, you know, it can only do so much, and he's not an IT person per se. So, to have a group advising and, you know, doing the research on that, I think would be invaluable. And then, as Francis was saying, looking at the fiber optics of the world and networking, you know, all of that is very valuable. So, I think short-term, we've got definite things that can be done right now, and long-term, there's a lot of things too. So, I would love to have this committee put together as an ad hoc committee to start off with and see where it goes. And as we know, we put some ad hoc committees together, and at some point, they become perfect. This is so valuable, you know?
Yeah, it's true.
Right, I guess that's kind of what I'm looking for, is that permission to be, like, you know, start as an ad hoc and see if you can get this airplane, see if you can get this thing to fly, see if you can get it to work and go and see what happens, but, you know.
I think the two things that I wanted to comment on, Dan, is, one, we've had some problems in the past when committees are put together and it's not offered broadly to everybody. So, we're not, you know, we don't want to handpick the committee. I think that we want to publicize the opportunity for a new committee, ad hoc committee, that will be focusing on technology, you know, advice. So, that would be important. So, in terms of like the mission statement and all of that, the first thing that would happen would be to put out the call for members based on perhaps your PowerPoint. And then, once the select board appoints members to the ad hoc committee, then it would be a matter of putting together the mission statement and the objectives and possibly timelines and that sort of thing. So, just a little bit different timeframe. And the other thing I just think would be important, I mentioned Kim Florrick because she's the technology director for the school, but how would this group, who may not be employees of the town or, you know, in the school system, like how would this group intersect with, you mentioned about find, you know, the best way to do is to talk to individual employees about what their technology needs are. So, you know, how would you interface with the people that, you know, are using or making decisions around the purchasing of various IT supplies and services? So, that was the only thing, if it's a group of people that currently aren't, they have to be a representative, I think, from the select board, but in terms of like Ed or maybe some other key employees... of like Ed or maybe some other key employees in town, that it has to be intersection points, I guess.
But yeah, I think, you know, we're not, we're not trying to do this all by ourselves. It's, 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 the idea is, is volunteer to help, you know, so work, work together and, and, and talk and have those conversations with the, with, with the right leaders of those different parts or of town, say, you know.
And I think, Dan, too, there's, there's obviously, you know, from the various departments, there's certain, certain requirements of the municipality, which I don't pretend to know, but I know that there's various software. The police have their own system, the assessors has her system, you know, in terms of the software that are needed, the, the cloud storage, you know, issues, whatever. So there's, there's a level of, of information that, you know, you'd have to be willing to gather and, and, you know, try to understand, you know, not one size is not going to fit everybody, I guess is my point, that, you know, every, every department has got a level of individuality in terms of its needs is my assumption or my, my understanding.
Yeah, I'd say you're right. You know, there'll be some commonality and then there'll be some differences, right? And so we, we, where there's commonality, there may be cost savings and where there's differences, we'll have to look for opportunities. You know, maybe, I mean, just talking, thinking off the top of my head is, is other towns have similar departments, maybe pooling our purchase with those towns such as to get volume pricing for things. But that's, you know, that would, that would take more planning. So.
But just sharing information too. I mean, we're not isolated as a community. You know, there's, every town is dealing with how to handle, you know, technology and, you know, infrastructure and all that. So that just sharing a lot of information like with fiber optics and analysis, I think that's all valuable.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I was looking at a map the other day of, of our town and all the fiber sites or planned towns that, towns that are planning to adopt fiber to the home or we're in the middle of the process or in some different stage. And we're surrounded by towns that are kind of going through, either have gone through or going through the same thing. So we'll try to, try to, try to work together as, as municipalities.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions about the, a potential ad hoc technology committee?
No, I just, I just want to say I appreciate the expertise because it currently, you know, doesn't, I can't speak for everyone, but for myself and, you know, we really need it in the town. Thank you.
I want to know that Art Lawrence said, you know, has certainly done a lot over the years from, on a very voluntary basis to help. I know we, you know, it's not, we don't have a technology committee, but I just wanted to acknowledge that he's been
Yes.
A big help in the town.
And, and, and I've, I've spoken to him, obviously, because well, we're on the COMCON together. And, and I feel that if it were a committee, he is willing to, to be involved again, which would be helpful because he has the historical knowledge. So, you know, I guess I don't, I don't want to talk about someone while he's not here, but, you know.
Point of nominating people who aren't here, Dan.
Yeah, sorry. I should be quiet.
One, one thought is, I don't want this to be, let's kick the can down the road a couple of weeks and think about it and all that. So is there a way, and I think we've done it in the past, where we get a small group, get together to explore the idea and explore interests of other people, then come back to the select board. Again, we need, I think we need to get it going because timing is crucial on what we just talked about earlier at the meeting. So is there a way that we can start this process now with Dan being the temporary lead, if he's willing to do that, to get this going? And then, you know, members, we can advertise for members. I think you're right. We want to be, go out there and ask people to go out. As far as department heads, I, I think they don't, if they don't want to be a member of the committee, because they probably don't have time, like Chris is doing with her grant committee, you reach out to the departments as you go along and get involved and bring them in for their expertise, you know? That way they don't have to commit every single meeting, so.
Well, as I see it, this committee votes to support the idea of the ad hoc technology committee. And then it gets publicized on our web, website and possibly social media. And we ask everybody who's interested to fill out a volunteer committee form and submit it to Ed. And then as early as two weeks from now, we could look at the people that are interested and appoint members to this committee.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. And, and do you have any idea of the number of people you might think would be most effective group, Dan?
I, well, it's definitely less than 10 because I, I, just from my managerial experience, as soon as you try to manage more than 10 people, you need a, you need structure, you know? So I, I, that's why I aim for the, the, the seven mark because I, I think that with, with seven people, you, you, we can get the right match of people with different types of focus. Because even though it's like information technology is kind of interesting because there's still niches or, so like doctors, right? There's, they're specialists. So we like to try to, to have people who cover those different specialties.
PowerPoint at five to seven. So that sounds like a reasonable number. Whether that would include just the committee and then other people be representatives to that or liaisons to that from either other committees or from the town. I guess we can discuss that. Sounds like the general support and for the committee. And like I said, this was the plan years ago and it was having a hard time getting off the ground. So.
Yeah. I'm kind of, I'm kind of good at getting things started. So I, I guess if I, I, you know, with permission, I would make, I would generate a form which people could fill out. Good, good. Okay.
You can just direct them to anybody who's interested to the website. And there's a, I think it sounded documents and forms and it's a volunteer committee. And they have to fill in why they're interested, their name, address, and that sort of thing, and what expertise they would bring to that committee. And then we will get a copy of it. Ed ultimately, they submit it to Ed. And then we would get a copy of all the people that are interested and then we would make a nomination to have the committee form. Or we would appoint people to the committee, I mean.
So can we get this on our webpage and also on the Southampton community page to get it out?
Yep.
If only we knew somebody on the Southampton community page.
Really?
Yeah. And, and who would post something that would describe the qualifications of the people that we were looking to submit applications?
I could do that.
Okay.
I think you could actually try to, could you actually put the PowerPoint? I mean, not, not in PowerPoint form, but in PDF form or something?
Yep. It's basically going to be a, a brochure version of the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Don't want to scare them away, Dan.
Well, you, you know, the people will see the, the, if, if they have the knowledge, they'll understand these words and it'll connect with them. So it's sort of like, oh, they're like, oh yeah, that's what I do. So I know this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have people call up the form and submit it to Ed. And as early as two weeks from now, we'll appoint members to the committee.
Hopefully, yes.
So can we make an official agenda item for two weeks from now, really?
Someone like to make a motion to form an ad hoc technology committee?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Francine and then John. Any further discussion?
Ed looked like he was going to say something.
I was. I'm just going to remind, remind the select board that you need a charge.
Okay. You mean, you mean you need a purpose for forming this committee?
The purpose, the amount, the amount of individuals you're going to have on it, the terms, yes.
Yeah. And that's, okay.
Do we need to do that now? Or do we, can we do that two weeks from now?
You can do it two weeks from now, but I'm just going to remind you.
Yes.
You need to do it.
Okay. And come up with a charge and also a recommendation for a number. We'll talk about all of that. And that might be based on also the amount of interest too. I mean, if we have people that have a variety of interests, I'd rather see the interest before confirming whether it's like five, six, seven or whatever. So let's plan for next time. We have a motion and second. Any more discussion?
Just one thought. Part of that charge, we could probably use a lot from Dan's PowerPoint.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor then?
Tish, my eye.
Falls on.
Roll and die.
Art, die.
And Rod and I. Dan, thanks very much for putting that together and for coming. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for, you know, listening to me and considering the idea. I really do hope it helps.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll go start working on a brochure.
Excellent you guy. All right. So next thing on the agenda is approval of the employee for short-term disability. So we don't make a point of saying anybody's name, but we do have an application for short-term disability for one of our employees. Did everyone get a chance to look at that?
Yep.
Yes.
Someone like to make a motion then?
I move to approve the short-term disability request.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Tish, my eye.
Falls on.
Roland, die.
Art, die.
And getting back to the agenda. Of code red agreement. Code red is the broadcast messaging throughout the town. And it's, refresh my memory, Ed, it's, what is the, what are the terms, the timing of the renewal for the code red? I think it's $4,000 if I'm not mistaken, something like that. Forty-nine, okay.
Forty-one.
Thirty-nine, yeah. Yeah, and it runs from January, January, we run from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. So it'd be a two-year agreement.
And is this, this is a line item under our operating budget, correct?
And actually, you're right. It has gone up.
Yeah. Because that was going to be my question. We've only budgeted $3,900 for this. And if we have to sign an agreement for two years or three years or whatever it is, where's the money coming from?
It's, it's actually like $4,095.
$4,095, yeah.
And it's three years. So it's $12,000 is what.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's $4,095 a year.
Right. But can we sign a contract when we don't have the other two years in hand? I mean, do you, are there clauses that say pending, pending money availability or something?
Yeah, we, I'll have to get back to them because yes, we would not be able to sign this without another $195 available.
Okay. Do you want to table this for now until that discussion happens? Or do you want to approve it pending funds?
Well, I think we should.
Do it either way.
So they're not asking us to sign a three-year contract, just, just, or to sign the three-year contract, but pay only one year, obviously. But, but we can sign a three-year commitment without having the money for all the three years?
I, I think so. We just budget it year by year.
Right. You just, you need the money for year one.
Okay.
So, and, and they want this back by December 1st. So we have basically a month.
Right.
Whatever we'd like to do.
Yeah. Why don't you hold on until the next meeting?
Well, let's look at possible places to find the, the money. If not, we'll come up with an alternative by next meeting.
Right.
Can we possibly take it from free cash?
That's an appropriation.
Even our leftover free cash from last year? Yeah?
Yeah.
Question we want to have at some point. But that would be a central source, if not a line item transfer.
Yeah. Okay.
This is what I'm thinking. I mean, since we know what we have from last year, and if we have a meeting before the end of this fiscal year, perhaps we can temporarily move some money around to cover these kinds of expenses and then hoping that it passes a town meeting that we can go back and replenish the money that we used. I know that's kind of a sketchy way, but it's there. So.
Jen?
Oh, hi, Jen. So I would double check this with Vicky, but I believe she said that the free cash from last year has to be spent by the end of this calendar year in order to use it. Otherwise, it just rolls back into our free cash again for the following fiscal year.
Yeah. Yeah, we would need to spend it by the time the tax rate is done.
Yeah. So it has to be, yeah. So by, like in December, so we wouldn't be able to appropriate it at another town meeting.
So that would mean a town meeting before the end of the year, which is going to be difficult.
Yeah.
Can you check in with Vicky and let us know about that? And we're going to put this on the agenda for next meeting.
That's correct. And I'm, I'm also going to re, reach out to Unsolved and just tell them, we've got $3,900. Can't, we can't sign a $4,095 in the first year and see if it can be restructured.
They'll keep it as it is and make up a difference.
Next year.
Jen, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're just going to put this on the agenda for next time and you'll get back to us on that. The next thing on the agenda then is we have an inter-municipal animal control agreement with the city of Blackfield. So that actually expired also, well, not also, but expired in August. So I did a lot of research about this when this came up the last time around. And we talked about it on the Monday municipal call with police, fire, EMD, border health and so forth. So basically, if you didn't know this, when there's animals in the road, roadkill, the highway department is called and they handle that. When there's an injured animal, they've had bobcats, they've had owls, they've had various other animals. The police department calls this Westfield rehabilitation group and they come and pick up the animal. They also can call them when there's a stray dog and they come. So what Ian said on the call Monday is it's a huge help. Just like the previous police chief said, that it's a one-stop, you know, thing. Some, some departments or some towns have like rabbit rescue and owl rehab and all that sort of thing. So it is a huge help to the police department. So that's one thing. I think that both Janine, previous town clerk and our current town clerk have some concerns about where the accountability lies when there are dogs that are repeatedly taken off the streets and then who pays? The town is paying a $50 haul for an animal. And are we turning that around and getting the reimbursement from the owner of the animal? And I don't know exactly what that, the answer to that is. They're not supposed to be able to pick up their dog until they pay the fees. But I'm not sure if we're following up with a level of accountability and actually charging the person. I think that some of the fees are being paid for by the dog registration to the town clerk, which sounds like a logical source of the fund, so to speak, because it's, you know, care of animals. But that was the only question that I, I don't know what the answer to that is. I had seen in the past a spreadsheet that had a list of all the calls and whether they were wild animals versus pickup of domestic animals. And at the time, it seemed, nothing seemed odd to me. Like, it wasn't like there was one dog that was on there, you know, 20 times. It didn't seem like it was all, all wild animals. You know, police, the police have said all along is, you know, we're a rural community and we want to be able to take care of the animals. We want, if landowners call up and say, I have an injured, you know, turkey or injured something on my property, that, you know, it's, it's a good thing to do. It's, it's the humane thing to do and the police feel like it's working. And so the only question that came up is, are we holding dog owners accountable when, or is the town just paying on their behalf? And I, I had some concerns with the dog hearing that, you know, we found out after multiple complaints. And I, I had some concerns, we had the dog hearing, that, you know, we found out after multiple complaints that the dog wasn't even registered in town. So where's the teeth to make sure people register their animals? You know, if we're taking the fees from registrations to pay to get animals out. So anyway, I just wanted to share that because I had looked into this quite a bit the last time the contract came up. So does anybody have any further comments you want us to make about that or questions?
I mean, I can tell you as far as getting reimbursement from the owner of the dog, we, I've never receipted any money for that, so I would say we don't.
Okay.
So when you pick up the dog, you don't have to pay? You can just take the dog out and they bill the town?
No, they do pay a fee for the number of days that the, the dog is housed, but we still get charged a fifty-dollar pickup.
The initial fee we pay, okay.
And that, that's not what we're being reimbursed, is that what you're saying?
But I'm wondering if we're being reimbursed. It doesn't sound like, according to Jen, that we are. So I don't know that we're holding pet owners accountable when it's a domestic animal.
Yeah. Is that something we could modify in our, in our contract going forward, since it's, I know we're amending an existing contract, but.
I, I thought that it, there, at, at some point, there was a discussion that Westfield would not release the pet to the owner unless and until they produced a receipt from our town saying that they paid the fee.
But then I think there was some concerns that these people, you know, like, sometimes it happens and it might be not a repetitive problem, but if an animal's picked up and our town hall's not open on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, that they're going to end up having to not be, they're going to be paying for extra days because of the lack of access to our.
Ah, I hear you.
I don't think.
Because otherwise, what's supposed to happen if it's like an unregistered dog is that, yeah, they're supposed to come back and register the dog and go back with that receipt.
Right.
Some loop that needs to be closed around the pickup fee.
Yeah, do we, do we get a report on a quarterly basis or something from the animal? Is it, now, just for clarity, is it both an animal wildlife rehabber and the animal shelter? Are there two different groups or one?
It's, it's, I believe it's just one.
One, it's one group.
But it's, it's the Westfield Animal Shelter? Is that who we're talking about, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's on the call. I don't know if.
Okay.
Up at all, Chief? You're the ones that access them.
But I was wondering if, if there was a report that came in from whomever is that facility to let us know that, okay, we released, you know, we kept and we released X numbers of, you know, dogs from your Southampton residents so that we would then know to maybe turn around and try to bill the, the resident. Is that?
We get a monthly invoice and they do list the services that they did for the town on the invoice.
Okay.
It would be interesting to see some of those.
Yeah, send a vendor warrant.
Saw them. It was very, to be honest with you, it was very interesting to me. Chief, you want to say a word about that contract or that service?
The service is definitely advantageous for the police department. You know, whenever we have a loose dog or an animal that we can't handle or a potential rabid animal, you know, the officers don't have the expertise or training to determine whether or not an animal's sick. It's much better and humane, if you will, for the animal control to come out and pick up the animal, whether it's a loose dog or if it's a sick animal or an injured animal. Certain injured animals, we will dispatch, say, a vehicle struck a deer, for instance. And we know the deer is not going to make it any further. It's too large of an animal for the animal control to come out for anyway. We would dispatch a deer or maybe a coyote, if you will, if it's just too large, but and that's, those are, those are animals that we're certain that there's certain death to, to follow. But it's, it's my, more, more of my concern is, are the, the rabid animals. We'll get, we often get a call for maybe a mangy fox or a raccoon that's rabid and, you know, we don't have the expertise to determine whether or not it's sick. And they do. And if they determine that it's sick, they'll euthanize it appropriately. Another issue is, you know, we formerly used to dispatch these animals, say it was a raccoon or a possum, and once it's sick, the officers aren't going to take it with them. They have to leave it there. So then what happens when another animal comes around and eats it and could possibly spread the disease even further?
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's a beneficial service for the police department. I, I will say that.
Well, if you think about it, if you are calling them and they're coming right over and they're picking up any animal and our town has charged fifty dollars, then, and that's a good service and you're happy with the service and you think they're ethical in the way they handle the animals, then it's really an internal problem in terms of turning it around and billing the owner of a domestic animal the fifty dollars that we're paying to actually have their dog be picked up. So I'm not so sure the contract, I mean, if they're providing the name and address and contact information. When I asked Lucy about their registration, I mean, we all know Lucy's been incredibly busy lately between the elections and the town halls, town meetings. So she actually is, they are behind in terms of sending out the dog registrations and even sending out the, you know, like, the man notices. So perhaps there needs to be a mechanism internally for making sure that whoever, you know, we're paying fifty dollars on is actually billed to the land, to the owner. So.
Or they, they have to increase their fee schedules. Say it's fifty dollars, if the town loses, they increase their fee schedule by fifty dollars and they reimburse us the fifty dollars. Could that be implemented in the contract?
Right. So I don't know if that's.
That would work.
Our signing of this particular contract is what I'm saying, because if that's, you know, we're not going to, you know, ask you to hold off from contacting them, you know, you need to, you know, get these animals, you know, off the streets or off the properties. So maybe it's an internal thing that the town clerk's office has to address. Just getting the list of all the services. What do you think about that? So should we go ahead and approve for another, for the second, I think it's the second or third renewal of the contract? Since it's a, you know, people are generally happy with the service and, and make a recommendation that this be looked at from the town clerk's office in terms of holding the resident accountable to pay the fee that we're currently paying?
I'm, I'm for that.
Okay, okay. And would you like to make a motion then to approve the renewal of the contract with City of Westfield, which I believe the mayor has already signed?
Yeah, I, I guess the question I have is, how much is it? It's just the agreement that we pay fifty dollars per dog. Where's the schedule? That's what I'm looking at for.
It's, it's fifty dollars per service to pick up any animal.
Okay, and that's, that's it.
But that's it? There's no, there's no other kind of administrative fee or something that we're charged?
Well, we would be, if, like, the animal needed care and they had to give it, you know, shots or whatever and was, and the animal wasn't picked up, we end up paying for that. Or if the animal, they took care of it and then it passed away.
Right.
And no one, no one had picked it up, we end up paying for that.
What about wild animals, Ed?
That I'm not sure of.
But is there like a, sort of a base fee, a fixed fee, and then these fifty dollars are kind of charges upon the occurrence, or is it just the, the charges upon occurrence rather than any kind of a fixed fee contract?
That's, yeah, it's sort of open-ended.
Well, let me go see if it's in the main contract. Hang on.
I mean, other.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I know we don't have an alternative. I just, I just would like to know, that's all. It's kind of open-ended, otherwise.
Actually, look into this a lot in terms of alternatives, and there was an organization called Urban Wildlife. There was a number of rescue companies that only handled certain animals, you know, small mammals versus, you know, larger ones. So after, and I talked to, I think, I talked to Charlie, I talked to the Department of Wildlife in the state. And so I actually did, like I said, a lot of research about this last time, and I had talked to a previous police chief. And so I, I do think maybe we might want to look at the actual contract and maybe a copy of the, the invoice from the last quarter or something. But I know when I looked at it, it didn't seem like it was heavily same animal. It didn't seem like it was heavily, we're paying a lot of money for injured animals. There was a lot of fifty-dollar charges for picking up of animals. It just didn't like it was over the top that we're like paying for all these wild animals to be.
Yeah, I, I'm all for this. It sounds like it's a very valuable, important service. I just wanted some perspective. And I'm looking at the expense report to see where that might show up so that we got a sense of what we spent so far this year.
Yeah. Tammy, would you like to say something?
Tammy, we're lunus two ninety-eight, College Highway. We have had quite a few reports of coyotes.
Yeah.
And even today, I had one run out in front of me at ten o'clock in the morning. And it was going up onto someone's porch.
Oh, wow.
The next house over had a kid out in the front yard playing on swings.
I know. We had one in our yard about a month ago, right in the backyard.
And my. What's that? Chief, is that something that we should be calling on to let you know that, hey, this is out during the day running around?
No, I mean, there's nothing we can really do about that. I mean, if it was somebody, sometimes, you know, people try to domesticate wild animals. We've had them do it with foxes, and it's created problems where the fox gets accustomed to getting food at somebody's house, and then they go to the neighbor's house expecting food, and it kind of gets aggressive. We've had that happen. But as far as that type of wildlife management, that's, that's an obligation of the state to, to sometimes perhaps increase hunting periods or catch limits. So if it's, if it's an animal that's creating a threat to public safety, absolutely. You, you would call the police department. But, yeah, I've seen an influx of wild animals to include, you know, coyotes in town, and there's nothing really we can do about that.
Last night, there was a report that a coyote had attacked someone's dog on the road. I'm hoping they had called and notified you guys, but I don't know that.
I'm not certain of it either. I don't know for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Ed, you want, I mean, does this, does this liquid want to, you know, get a copy of the full contract and possibly invoice or something that shows what service we're paying for, or? What do you, what would you like to do? Ed, do you want to share something with us from there?
Sure, let's see. Parties agrees to the following protocol for all animals entering the shelter. Domesticated animals other than canines shall be accepted by and boarded at the Westfield Animal Shelter at the sole discretion of the Westfield ACO. Each canine will be given a canine distemper parvo DHAPP Bordatella vaccine, deworming, and a flea treatment. Each feline will be given feline distemper FVRCP, deworming, and a flea treatment. All other animals receive deworming and a flea treatment if applicable. Payment for the services in A, B, and C above shall be the responsibility of the owner of the animal and paid to Westfield upon retrieval of the animal. Should the animal not be retrieved, these costs shall be paid by Southampton. Westfield shall bill Southampton monthly. Itemizing services provided. The current cost of these services is as follows. Bordatella, twenty-two eighty-five. Distemper parvo DHAPP and FVRCP, twenty-three forty. Flea, flea treatment, twenty-four eighty-six. Deworming, seven dollars. Westfield shall inform Southampton of any change in these charges, which represent the retail cost to Westfield. Southampton shall be responsible for the current actual charge to Westfield. Any domesticated animal housed at the Westfield Animal Shelter that does not display proof of rabies vaccination will be vaccinated while housed at the WAS. This cost currently seventy-five dollars will be the responsibility of the owner upon retrieval or Southampton if not retrieved. Westfield shall bill Southampton as outlined in D above and will notify each community should the charge to Westfield by its veterinarian change. Should a domesticated animal be so vaccinated, the owner shall be responsible for acquiring the paperwork from Westfield and having the canine licensed in Southampton prior to its release to the owner. Should any domesticated animal be vaccinated and the fee not paid by the owner of the animal, Southampton shall incur the cost, which will be billed monthly by Westfield.
Okay, can, can I just add? I, I found the line in the expense report. It's under Dog Control. We have a budget of thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and change, of which we've spent eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars since July 1st. So there's a balance of like twelve thousand six hundred. I mean, that's all I was looking for, some ballpark.
Yeah, my sense is like, when I looked at the, the invoices, it might have been even a year's worth. I don't think we had, me, I don't think, I didn't see a single one where we ended up paying for any vaccines. I thought that most of them were animals that were picked up.
Okay, that, that's my question, and I got my answer. Thank you.
I do think that Lucy was the one that sent an email to me about, you know, not being sure that this fifty dollars is being turned around and charged to the landowner. And that's something that, I don't know what would need to happen for that to happen, but it just seems like if she's handling dog fees for registration, then she could propose a payment plan or some sort of a structure for recouping these charges. I think that's the only loop that hasn't been closed. Otherwise, it sounds like it's a good service and it's reasonably priced and we're under budget and all that.
Yes. Yeah.
Does anybody want more information, or are you prepared to make a motion to extend this contract?
I'll move to extend the contract.
Okay, so it's a, it's a two- or three-year contract extension, Ed?
Two years. It's, yeah. It gets, it gets confusing because it's the third and last of three options to extend for two years.
Right.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, so Francine, and then Chris, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Sishman, I.
Falls on.
Roland, I.
Art, I.
And Roden, I. And by the way, Matt, sorry for being late, but welcome back. Okay, so next is the CARES Act funding and then COVID-19 update. So we've got a split this afternoon that has.
Can I just say, I'm sorry, could I just say one thing to qualify that? That was a revolving fund. Therefore, the money that goes in there was not general fund money. It was money that the town has collected, out of which they're paying these fees.
Thank you very much. That's coming from the dog registration.
Yes.
Yeah, animal registration fees. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so next is CARES Act funding. So I'll turn it over to you, Chris.
Me?
We got a document this afternoon. It was two Excel worksheets. One of them was a list of all the CARES Act one things that were funded, and then whether the money's been spent or whether or not. There was a question of reallocating it, and then the second document was all the requests that have been compiled for CARES Act two.
Right. There've been a couple, a couple of, Ed has held two meetings over the last two weeks with all the folks in town hall and various department heads that could make it to talk about what they were looking for for CARES Act two, and people were talking in those meetings about their, their ideas and did some brainstorming about those needs. And so that's now, Ed has managed to compile those into the spreadsheet that was handed out today. So I'm, I'm seeing the compiled requests at the same time you all are in terms of, in terms of the amount of money as well as the spend up.
Okay.
So really, Ed, it's up to Ed to run this one, not me.
Oh, you'll do a much better job, Chris.
Say what?
You'll do a much better job with it.
I don't think so. I'll chime in if I need to.
Either of you prepared to talk about, can the money that, for example, if there's a plan not to spend, what had been previously allocated? Is there an opportunity to take that, does that go back in the pot for Southampton? Can that be reallocated prior to applying it to CARES Act two?
There, there's every indication that we'll be able to reallocate those funds to something else within the town.
Okay, so we get.
As long as, as long as it's still an eligible cost.
Right, yeah. In fact, within this application for CARES two, there is a separate spreadsheet to show what might not have been spent or might not have been needed in care, in the first tranche that we got, and how we would recommend reprogramming it. So my understanding is we can re. So my understanding is we can recycle to this next tranche, what, what has not been able to be used and what is likely not to be used. It may be that we've got things that are still from CARES one that are wanted, but we just haven't procured them yet. That's a different scenario. I'm talking about things that definitely nobody, you know, they've changed their mind. They don't need it now. It's not as urgent, whatever. It's my understanding of everything I've read, that can be reprogrammed and there's an actual request as part of this application, a separate spreadsheet to show what has been reallocated. And again, just keep in mind that the spreadsheet that you all have tonight, that Ed has put together, that, that is more of an, I would call it an internal management document. That is not what gets submitted as the application. I mean, basically, all the apples and all the oranges get grouped together and they're, and they're sent in on an application that has, you know, maybe six categories or something like that, you know? So it's, there's a whole nother step that, you know, that has to be done. But this is more indicative of the needs as expressed by the various town departments and, and that's, that's what that represents. Okay?
And the Excel spreadsheet just came out this afternoon, so I glanced at it, but I didn't get a chance to look at it fully. Was it indicate all the things that were requested that were subject to MEMA reimbursement?
I don't, I don't know about that, Ed. I don't know.
No, it does not.
Because that's a pretty significant reimbursement. Isn't it seventy-five percent?
From FEMA, correct?
FEMA, right, FEMA.
Right.
Yeah.
So that would ultimately affect how much more we might be able to access if it was determined that if there's a high likelihood of reimbursement from FEMA for some of the things, right?
Correct, because if it's eligible.
Do we over ask with the hope that there would be reimbursed or?
I, I have a list that would, would break it down by at least the categories that we applied for, those items that would probably be FEMA reimbursement.
Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the earlier spreadsheet when we, we were knowing that we got this grant, you had another category called other that was about a hundred and seventy-three thousand. And that was, those were items, I believe, that were not FEMA reimbursable out of the grant that we've received, right? They're, they're fully CARES Act money, is that right?
Some of them were definitely not FEMA reimbursable. Some of them were in a gray area. So I have to, I have to go back and actually check and confirm some of these.
Okay.
What questions do people have?
I don't know if it would be helpful to put up the, the spreadsheet on, on CARES one or not. I mean, I, I guess my concern is, I'll just jump in, is, is just the spend down. You know, we've got, I think we've got a better sense tonight out of the two hundred and twenty-three thousand that we got in the first tranche. I'm believing it broke out another column of what's already been spent and then what is in process. And those together, there was, I don't have it in front of me, but it was like forty-five thousand, I think, Ed, that's been spent. Another sixty thousand or something that's been, that is in progress for procurement.
You got a good memory.
But there's still, there's still items that were part of that request that we're not sure. I gather some departments haven't told you, you know, if they still need it or not. I mean, there may be more to be put in the, to be procured column than just the sixty thousand, which is largely the police request.
Right. Well, it comes out to about a hundred and ten thousand dollars of the two twenty-three.
Right. So we've got, we've essentially got right now with, with not knowing. For example, I, I keep harping on this because I'm, I'm, just don't understand why there hasn't been action on it from their part. But the Parks Department had five thousand dollars allocated for signage. They have not used it yet. I don't know if they requested it. I've reached out to them twice at least about this. So there, then I'm not talking the, you know, photocopy little signage. I'm talking some real signage that says, wear your mask. This is a mask zone or something for the Bree Field and for Conant Park. So that five thousand dollars, I'm assuming is going to get drawn down on. And so it may jump into that procurement, you know, category soon. But even if, you know, whatever, we're, we're still about a hundred thousand dollars unspent and un, and not in progress, if I don't know how to say that right, out of the first tranche. Okay. And then the second tranche is another three hundred and some thousand. So we need to figure out if we have to reprogram some of this originally, I guess, in the hundred thousand that's left to be, to be encumbered one way or another. First, somehow, we gotta, we gotta figure that out and then see how much of the three hundred thousand we're really going to need to ask. I mean, I, I don't want to turn money away, but at the same time, I, I think it's kind of foolhardy to request, you know, another three hundred thousand dollars if we can't spend it by December. I mean, I, I mean, we have to request something. I, I don't say we shouldn't request, but I don't think we're going to come anywhere near the three hundred thousand request.
Right now, in, in general, just what's here and some of it I don't think is really eligible. But in general, the total of the requests for phase two that has come forward so far is two hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. But, but of that, like I say, at the second department head meeting, Principal Pluta from Norris had told us about forty-nine thousand dollars of technology that they've already spent that for remote learning that they would be looking to see if they could get a reimbursement from. But other than that, I have not received or been confirmed of any other requests from Norris School. So, you know, I, I know that they were actually looking to replace part of their HVAC system, but that's a capital request. And everything I've seen so far for capital requests such as that has not been eligible or approved. But, you know, they might have some other significant requests in there that I don't have on this list.
Well, can you just elaborate? I mean, all of our requests are, I shouldn't say all. I don't want to paint in black and white here. But a ton of our requests have been capital requests. So can you just elaborate on what?
Well, cap, capital, cap, you can't buy vehicles with it. You can't do capital modifications to buildings with it. Like if you wanted to do it like an addition or a major system or have you.
Then I get that, but the HVAC would be entirely tied to filtration, I would imagine. I mean, I don't want to put words in their mouth and I haven't seen this application. But I believe that would, the reason for that request is not necessarily because they intrinsically otherwise would need an HVAC system. It's just tied to the ability.
Right.
Filter and funnel air in and out of those rooms to reach a, I mean, this is, you know, I don't know. That would be my imagination as to why they would request this under COVID. And I don't think it's really that imaginative, honestly. We haven't seen a capital request ever. So it's not like it's something that we're planning actively.
I would say you've got a great imagination, but other than that, that, that little, little plug, I haven't seen anything, you know, definitive on it either yet.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
People have to know exactly what rest and who they're like for CARES Act one, because they know that they, they got.
Something happened with your mic. I can't, did you, is your, is there like paper over your mic? I can't hear you for some reason now.
Can everybody else hear me?
Now we can.
Now, now.
Now we can.
Uh, yeah, actually there was paper on my mic. Thanks. Um, so does everybody, every department head know that they have funding for the request under CARES Act one? Because that was a problem initially. So it's possible to give people a deadline, November one. Let us know, are you not going to hire this person? Are you not going to choose that you changed your mind? It's not needed. Can you give people a deadline like by November one, they have to seek fun, you know, go out and buy or purchase what they had originally submitted? And if they're not planning on doing it, to give the information back, actually, it had to be, it had to be sooner because it's October thirtieth, I think, that CARES Act.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, is that, has that already been asked? I mean, is that already something that you know that fire department's not going to be hiring like a minister of assistant? And, you know, the Board of Health may have changed their mind about something else or?
It, yeah, it, some of these.
Some of it has been, has been responded to, responded to and others hasn't. So I, I can send that out and tell them definitively, okay, you're going to tell us if you still want it or you want to reprogram it.
Yeah.
By Monday's date.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, we definitely, well.
Want to say something?
Friday wouldn't be bad, Ed, honestly, because Monday's pushing up against the thirtieth already.
I say Friday, maybe or Thursday.
They, they ought to know now whether they're going to need it or use it or not. This is.
Positions, you know, so that's an important thing. I mean, they're going to have to turn it back around and and then would be able to use that for quest.
So, so for, for example, if, if the fire chief was not going to use whatever had been allocated for that assistant, then that money can be at, or that money could be used toward whatever his second request, his second round request is, for example, you know?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
You want to add something?
Yeah.
No.
Tammy, do you want to add anything? No. Okay. So that seems like a logical thing to do by the end of the, you know, the Southampton Work Week. Let everybody know whether or not you either go out and purchase this and you have a deadline for when all that happens or let us know if you're not going to so we can work on CARES Act two. The request for CARES Act two, and by the way, thank you for going around to all the different departments to access and to help them in determining what their needs are. But do the requests for CARES Act two exceed the available funds?
No.
No.
Not yet, not yet. No, no, no. And I'm glad to, they have done, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
I said, it sounds like there's going to be even more. I'm assuming that there's going to be some departments that are not going to spend or what they may have thought they needed back in May is different from what they need now. So I said, don't leave money on the table.
Yeah, I think there will be some that will have to be reprogrammed just because, you know, timing is not favorable and or, you know, the, the item that they thought about is really not as urgent now as it was before kind of thing. And the other one that's not on your list, Ed, if you wouldn't mind just putting in a placeholder, I've, I've also reached out, as I mentioned before, to the Ag Commission folks for the market, farm market gardener people. I haven't received anything. I've talked to people, but I haven't received anything yet. But if we could just put in a placeholder of like two thousand dollars or something, it won't be much. It'll be mostly PPE kinds of things.
Sure. And, and actually, as I was sitting here this evening, I knew when I did the Town Hall one, there was something that was, I was forgetting. And I was going to put in for additional web services costs of like five thousand dollars for additional items we are putting on the web due to COVID.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the emergency manager and there's no numbers in there. And I'm looking at things like electronic signage and communications. Is that not going to be?
Yeah. If, if you go back to the sheet for phase one, you'll see that.
So it's all there.
Emergency manager for, yeah, for electronic signage.
Okay.
Sixteen thousand dollars is approved, sixteen thousand dollars is spent or incurred.
Okay.
It's incurred. Communications only, so far, it's only three thousand dollars of the twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine.
I think that the challenge is, as we've said, this is, you know, we're the couple of places where we've got stipends or some sort of remuneration involved. Our challenge is that right now, we, we know that we've only got this through December. So for example, I mean, we've got, I think, EMD at, at twelve thousand or something, or not right, or twelve or fifteen or something.
Right.
But we can really only go from what we'd agreed on earlier from April, May, June, and then from then to December. So really, we've got six months that we can, we can kind of invoice, whereas the balance that we'd asked for may have to be shifted around. And the same with the, I guess we haven't spent, there was money in there for a contra, sorry, a public health nurse that hasn't been spent at all. That was thirty-five thousand. I don't know that we're spending that period. So that too has got to be something that can be reprogrammed, I think, is my understanding of it. Ed, am I right or?
I think, yeah, I think these department heads just need to get back to Ed around whether or not they're planning on doing that. You know, I think we have the ability, this came up recently because of the EMD position. I mean, right now, we've already voted to back pay through since the beginning of COVID, really, the first three months before the fiscal year. And then up through the end of October. So that money is kind of due to Charlie, our current EMD. But I don't think there's anything stopping us from creating a year contract. I mean, we have contracts for software support. I mean, don't we have the opportunity to come up with a contract and pay upfront?
That I don't know. I mean, I, I think that would be, in my mind, that would be a question to ask their, the MEMA person. Because again, how they interpret, how tightly they interpret, you know, the benefit received by.
Yeah, right.
You know?
Yeah, we, we talked about that. Chris and I had a telephone meeting with the treasurer from East Hampton on their CARES Act. And we, we talked about prepaying things like if we were to enter into an agreement for cell phones for all department heads and they pay for the phone out of this money and prepay the years, you know, annual, you know, monthly, monthly costs. If works and whether or not we could do something like that.
Yeah, and it's, it's not clear. I mean, I think we've got to check with the, the MEMA rep. And we could take, we could take the risk and do it. But then when an audit comes around and they say, uh, you couldn't have, you shouldn't have done that, then you're going to get.
No.
So, you know.
We need, those are the kinds of questions of see if we get front loaded a little bit and spend more of this money down in the categories we know we can use beyond December thirtieth.
Yeah, I don't know.
Quite crazy that they, you know, there's like a half a million dollars here and, and it's all has to be services you utilized and benefited from by between now and December thirtieth. I mean, I mean, you know, it isn't over yet.
Yeah, it's not going to be over in December. I wish it were.
Ed, I don't know what your thought on the, on the prepaid contract idea. I mean, I, I really don't have a sense of it. I know in my previous work, that was a little bit iffy to do it when you didn't really.
I mean, it's, it's if, it's iffy to do it. Like on the cell phone piece, it's interesting because I look at the cell phone piece and I would say on one hand, although the cell phone companies want that monthly payment in there over a two-year period to pay for the cell phone that, okay, well, maybe buying that cell phone is an eligible CARES Act fund. But, you know, those monthly fees that you're going to enter into for a two-year period, well, right now, they're going to expire in December. So as, as of January, guess what? You've got to pick those up as a, as a budgetary cost item.
Unless they let you prepay it and we need to ask the question.
But if you prepaid it, would the CARES Act and FEMA catch on to that and say, yeah, you prepaid a year. We're only, but here's what they, you bought them. We're only going to credit you for three months of that.
And that's why we're saying we need to ask the question. I don't want to put us in, you know, expose us to, to something that when they audit, they're going to recoup. That's, that's not it. It's just finding out if we can do it in the first place.
Yeah. So, you know, and aside from the phones, it is, it is the EMD one. It's the, apparently there's an MOU that exists for the contact tracing, which I was not aware of. So that, you know, that contract too is, is longer than just December.
December.
Or the, the money allocated, I gather from what I saw on the spreadsheet, I won't say the contract because I haven't seen it. But the, the, the money allocated is more than just for December too. So those are the ones where there, there are people involved that we've got to really understand how this works. But it sounds like, you know, the CARES Act money may go away as of December, whether, you know, COVID exists or not. I mean, the government may change their mind and extend it too, but we won't know until the last minute, unfortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately, what they call phase four, the legislation is still sticking, spinning around, going nowhere in Washington.
Right.
Phase four has the piece in it if they were going to extend the date past December thirtieth or not. Now, what one may, one may think since vaccines aren't supposed to start being available until February or March, that they would extend that date. But so far, we haven't seen much movement of anything for, for the legislation for stimulus relief of any manner coming out. We haven't seen much movement of anything for, for the legislation for stimulus relief of any manner coming out of Washington.
Okay, so we have a deadline of this week to actually get, ask department heads to, you know, say, and committee chairs, whatever, what their plans are for FIC CARES 1. And then what money might be real allocated into the pot for CARES Act 2. We don't have, you know, we haven't maximized our spending on CARES Act 2, so there should also be a call to department heads for. Any kind of additional requests. I did happen to notice that the highway department did not have much in, in the way of ask at all. I'm not really sure if that's just because that, that nothing applies, but that was just something I noticed relative to other departments.
Yeah, they've had some radios, that's about it, really.
That and the hot water heater for hand washing, so.
Right.
Other than that, they're pretty well set on master stuff, so.
Yeah, it might be worth just asking, but if we are gonna have an additional opportunity to have some more spending, so the next question is. We don't meet again until November 6th. This application is due by the 30th. Are people comfortable deferring to the Ad Hoc Committee? On the requests and seven going around to different departments? I mean, at this point, that's pretty much, you know, where we're at. Give a deadline, figure out what's happening with the current CARES 1, add whatever to the pot, take a, ask for additional. Requests from department heads, and then I'm comfortable with, I mean, unless you, you know, the committee, which, you know, is basically Ed and. Matt and Chris and Charlie are comfortable with putting.
And Caitlin.
Oh, hi Caitlin. Yeah, so if people are comfortable with deferring to the committee, I thought that was part of the charge, was to help sort that out, so. Is that where we're all at, or do you want to talk about it some more?
Well, I don't know whether you had any questions about, you know, some of the items that people are asking for. I mean, that would be my only thought, and, and like Ed said, some of them, we may have to check first. That they can even, that we should even ask for them. I mean, I, you know, they may not be. Allowed right from the get-go, so we, you know, we need to sort of figure that out too, but. If anybody had any questions about some of the items, some of the bigger ticket items.
Well, let me, let me go down the list, number one, and thank you for jogging my memory and asking about highway not having much, because one of the things I'm gonna have to go back and look at is. Randall and I were talking about whether he should put in. Some money for wages to backfill or whatever, as we get into November and December if. His crew came down with COVID-19 and weren't able to work because of COVID-19 for plowing or whatever, and I haven't, I. I didn't see that from him, so I'll go back and check on that, but let me just go down quickly the list of requests from. For, that have come in for Phase 2. Police department is actually, let's see, they're asking for a. Mobile command center, which is a telephone alternate, and Ian has put in, in there, only if the CARES. Act can support the ongoing service fees besides the purchase of it, to which they may not be able to. $3,309. He put in one Tri-band portable radio, but it's actually for the highway department, so that. Almost could be shifted down to highway, because in Phase 1, he had asked for, I think it was.
Three, maybe?
No, five.
Five, okay.
Two, two, two for fire, two for police, and one for the EMD.
Right.
But it would be helpful to highway as well. Let's see. He's asked for a fixed-drive laptop, software and mouse for the information management section. You know, which is different than a laptop for himself, $1,750. Plexi dividers for book, the booking in the interview rooms, $300. Looking to add three additional phone, phone ports within the EOC, $500. Four-line phone added to the EOC, $200. A fogger for $500. Wages for police coverage if they have an issue, $7,100. Wages for dispatch coverage, $2,450. Then PPE, $300. Their total's $20,807. Highways requested an electric hot we, heater, electric hot water heater for hand washing, $1,575. Two UV HEPA air purifiers, $2,260. Fire departments requesting two laptop Panasonic ToughBooks. Which are similar to the type of computers that are in the police cruisers. And two of them are $6,000. Uniforms, $21,000. Pediatric life support class, he did not have a cost for that, so I have to check with them on that, if it's really free, or he just didn't have a cost and send it along. An automated CPR machine, $16,500. Seven defibrillators, $11,200. Four UV light cases, $600. A CPAP machine, $800. Ten portable. VHF radios, and I think that's UHF radios, and I typed it in wrong, $15,000. Two SP02. And seven CO cables for cardiac monitors, $1,810. Wages for coverage, $10,000. A stretcher auto loader for the ambulance, $26,000. An SSCOR portable suction machine, $1,000. A stair chair, $1,200. Road sign for the SFD to make the temporary sign they have in front of the. Fire department that has COVID information on it, permanent. Or more, shall we say, more of a permanent nature, $4,000. And a video surveillance upgrade, $5,500. That totals $120,610. Norris Elementary School, so far, all I know is technology upgrades for remote learning. That was mentioned at our department head meeting, $49,000. Southampton Community Cupboard, food for outreach, $2,500. Southampton Housing Authority, they were supposed to talk about. Requesting funds for rental assistance at last night's meeting, and I haven't heard back from them if they came up with a actual number to request. The health departments requesting a docking station for their laptop, $200. Vaccine refrigerator, $2,000. Contact tracing MOU, $13,500. Cybersecurity email hosting, $2,500. PPE, $9,100. Three thermometers, $720. Collar printer, $600. Wages, $8,000. Toner cartridges, $500. Sinage, $750. Steel storage cabinet for the PPE, $770, so that totals $38,640.
Can, can I ask you a question, Ed? On the. The contact tracing, is that the difference, this 13-5, between the 20,000 that was in. In CARES 1, less what they spent of the 20, and this is the balance they're carrying forward? Or is this in addition to the 20,000 that they put in CARES 1?
This, this to me so far from my perspective would be in addition to.
So you're looking at $33,500. For contact tracing.
And the other thing is, let me just do quick math.
I, I remember signing off on two. Two, two odds of 1,500, right, so.
Well, and, and the other thing is for contact tracing. Is. Let's say there was. I don't know, three, three months of the year left to December 30th, or even four months, four months is $6,000, so. The 13-5 technically wouldn't seem to be eligible to be taking you into like January next year. So I'll have.
But, but, but this was supposed to end in December.
That's what I just said, so I'm gonna have to check on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and, and whenever the MOU started too, right? Because that was the other point, right? So, however many months the MOU, when it started, and however many months it was supposed to go for. At whatever, 1,500 a month, is that right?
Right.
A flat fee or whatever it was, no matter whether we had cases or not, right?
Right.
The, the question I had all along about that, and I've asked it, and I was told that it's already been answered, but I wouldn't be asking again if I didn't, if I got an answer. And that is, I was told originally that South Hadley is doing contact tracing, the department, Public Health Department in South Hadley is doing contract tracing. There was a four-town collaborative that included South Hadley, Southampton, Hadley, and I believe Russell. And I had asked, are we paying to do, for them to do contact tracing, and I was told, no, we aren't. And because it's four towns, I was under the impression that it was funded through something that South Hadley, South Hadley got. So I just didn't want to be unethical by paying an individual resident. The money due to contract tracing if South Hadley is being funded. As part of a collaborative under a different grant like DPH, so that's all I was trying to ensure was that. And that there was a disclosure form that was assigned, that the Board of Health requested, because the person that they hired was an individual citizen who is. Married to an employee of town, so all I was asking was that we confirm before we pay this large amount of money for contract tracing. That it's not being funded by another source, because I don't think that would be right, and that there'd be a disclosure form. Because it wasn't some, they didn't advertise the position, they just appointed someone to get paid who happens to, you know, be a relative of an employee, so. Those were my issues, and I didn't get an answer to those things, so that would be the only thing I would request that you ask, Ed.
Yep, okay. Let's see, then the emergency manager did not request anything. Additional to this point in time. I will check with Charlie again. Council on Aging, reception desk, $1,000. Grab-and-go meals, $2,000. Technology training, $1,000. Retrace, retractable awning plus installation, $3,500. Newsletter prep, $1,000. Stand-up heaters, $500. They were looking to see what hotspots for Wi-Fi might cost. They didn't have a dollar figure for that. Grand pads, $1,000.
Those are like tablets for.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm looking over to the explanation and go, I hadn't heard of those before, but yeah, like tablets.
Very simple technology for tablets, yeah.
Activity books for seniors, $750. Additional instructors and or personnel for outreach, $1,000. Care bag contents, $900. Docking station for laptop, $400. Shelf-ready food, $1,500. Laptop for the administrator, $1,000, but that's actually, would be included in my IT request for town hall. Building depart, oh, their total's $15,550. Building department, three tablets for the inspectors totaling $1,260. One laptop for the building commissioner, $1,000. Technically, that would be included in. What I'm requesting, if we can, for the department heads for laptops and docking stations, so their total was $2,260. Town hall, deep cleaning if needed, $2,500. Disposable mask, $500. Thirteen laptops with docking stations for the department heads, $24,000. Thirteen cell phones for department heads, I've got that open and blank at this point. Gloves and active bacterial spray, $500. Federal audit if needed, $4,000, as we may need a federal audit this year. Due to the. Funds we are receiving for COVID grants. Sanitizing wipes, $500. Air balancing and HVAC adjustments, $5,000. Hand sanitizers, $500. I did forget the webs, web service additional cost for COVID postings, postings, $5,000, so that would make it. $42,500 in total. Collector Treasurer has requested a laptop for the department head, that would be included with the department heads of 13 up above. She's also requested a laptop for her staff, $1,500, so their total would be $1,500.
Any questions or comments about any of that?
I've still got two more departments to go.
Oh, okay.
Or did you just mean the town hall?
No.
You probably just meant the town hall.
I thought you were done. Or I wish you were.
Gonna say, yeah, wishful thinking. I may, I'll, I'll go through quicker. The, the town clerk is requesting a paper folder for $1,211. A mini laminator for $49. General soft, office supply increase for additional office supplies she's going through because of the volume, $694. A ballot machine for $6,000. That one, I really doubt that is going to be eligible, because it really wouldn't be due to COVID. Laptop or desktop for the assistant town clerk, $1,500. Extra postage, $2,164, because of the volumes that we're sending out. Wages accrued, $2,958. Wages for the upcoming election for additional people, $4,435. Subtotals, $19,011. The library, PPE, $600. A vacuum with HEPA filter, $256. HVAC adjustments due to COVID, $1,000. Wages for an extra staff member, because they're doing the outside. Work, and someone also has to watch the door when they come inside, $3,024. Three, two stand-up heaters, $466. Two Zoom accounts, a hun, no, $320. A laptop for the staff, $1,000. Air balancer, $1,500. Second phone line, no cost. Lease filled in, doesn't mean it's free. An outdoor tent, $250. A printer for patrons outs, for outside use, $170. Two laptops for patrons for outside use, $1,528. Wages for extra cleaning, $400. Website, additional website costs, $800. Deep cleaning if needed, $1,000. And wages for staff coverage, $4,100. Subtotals, $16,414. And the new total with my $5,000 additional, and actually. Chris's $2,000 for the Ag Commission would be, let's see.
$293.
$293, $292.
So we're, we're approaching the. 300,000 mark. But we do need clarification on, on some of these positions that look like they're gonna go beyond. Are they carryover from before, or is it new money? I, that's the question.
Right, exactly, and I'll follow up on those.
And if some, some have a subject to FEMA reimbursement, that's.
Yes.
25, 25% that would actually end up having to pay anyway.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so it's really crucial that.
Technically, if someone requested $10,000 in wages. You know, for backfilling due to COVID, which I'll tell you is basically FEMA eligible. That would mean that of the $10,000 requested here of the CARES Act, we'd only receive $2,500.
Well, I would, I, I feel comfortable deferring to the committee and also department heads. I think that we did have to cut a lot of line items, postage being one of them. Looking to see if there's any opportunities to replenish some of the line items that might be. Looking to see if there's any opportunities to replenish some of the line items that might be eligible for CARES Act. The EOC, no funds were, you know, delegated to the EOC or EMD, so I think that's another thing. Senior citizens, I mean, they're the people that are the biggest risk. I think, you know, if there's anything that can be done for individual seniors or businesses or the schools. So I just don't want to leave any money on the table. You know, there's, there's a lot of needs out there, and the CARES Act does extend to businesses and individual seniors and obviously the schools. So I just hope we maximize the money that we could get out of this.
Yeah.
That's what I needed.
Yeah, and I don't know honestly that we've really reached out that much to the individual businesses. That's maybe something we need to think about doing quickly, because unless you have it, I really haven't. But, you know, it wouldn't be to the big chain stores. It would be our small individual, you know, home-based, or not home-based, but our small businesses in town that are not part of a big chain. I think at one point I had a discussion actually with the folks from Heritage, the, who's it, the, the library? And they were asking, and at the time I didn't know what was maybe available, but they, they look like they've got a lot of Plexiglas already installed, et cetera, in the, that bookshop there, the Heritage Books.
Yeah.
I don't know if that could be possibly reimbursable. So, but I don't, we gotta get, get to them very quickly if we figured out who might be eligible for this stuff, I guess.
Okay. So anybody else have any comments or suggestions about CARES two, one, or the process? I do think it's been certainly a lot more transparent and a lot more thoughtful than the first one, which felt like it was a quick apply for this. So thank you for reaching out to all the different departments that needed the help, and hopefully we can get that off by the end of next week.
So do you need a motion for this?
I think so.
Okay. So I'm, I'm, I move that that the, the Grant Committee, Grant, yes, the Grant Making Committee have the authority to approve the final final proposed application.
Is the Ad-Hoc Grant Committee?
Yes, Ad-Hoc Grant Committee for this, for Phase Two of the CARES Act.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion or?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, Matt did, I think.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments about it? All in favor?
Tishman eye.
All's eye.
Roll and die.
And Roden eye. Thank you again for everybody's help on that.
Thank you, thank you.
The next agenda item is the revenue and expense report. I didn't see a revenue one. Did that get sent out?
No, we still haven't received a revenue one. Just the expense account, no.
Rumor has it that Jen, you have at least July and August.
Yeah, so, I mean, right now we're still closing up fiscal year twenty. So that's something that Vicki doesn't plan on reviewing until the prior year is closed out. So I can enter the receipts, and she has to review she, and then post it for, in order to generate the report.
So we can't do this fiscal year till we close out twenty, right? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, yeah. So, I mean, so as soon as we close out twenty, which hopefully will be next week, or, you know, it's going, hopefully it'll be before Vicki leaves.
Yeah.
Then I'm not sure if she'll have, you know, how much time she's gonna have to review the twenty-one or post, but I guess we'll see. I mean, she only has two weeks left.
Yeah.
Question, is there a possibility that Vicki will leave before we close out fiscal twenty?
I, I think that we're gonna finish up.
Thank you.
I'm hoping that we're finishing, we plan to finish up most of it next week, so we should be good for closing out fiscal year twenty before she goes.
Great. Does anybody have any questions on the expense report that we get?
We submitted at the Finance Committee last night. Mostly everything was right in mind with that twenty-four, twenty-five.
The Finance Committee didn't have any questions?
They had some questions, but mostly on the prepays. And we explained, well, sometimes you gotta prepay it upfront to begin the year.
Software support, for example.
There's one, one I had a question on was on the, I guess I hadn't noticed it before. It's probably been there, but was from the, from the gift fund, I think. There was thirty-five thousand dollars for sidewalks. And I was just curious what that could be used for.
Sidewalks.
Thank you. But what's it all about? Is that, is that the money from developers if they don't put in a second, if they don't need a second sidewalk? Oh, we actually have that amount of money, thirty-five thousand available?
That's correct, yeah.
Well, okay.
I, I hadn't actually noticed that it fell under the gift fund accounts before.
Yeah, it was that, I think, and then, and I'm assuming the, the revolving funds for the police detail, it's gotta be another one of those where we're waiting for reimbursement, because they're in the negative, so it must be another. I was hoping it wasn't the old ever-source carryover, that we've settled that one, have we, or not?
Yes, Ian did a wonderful job beating them up.
So this is a new one, okay, all right.
But yeah, there, there is usually some lag to that, because we, we pay for the details when they work them in their pay period. And then, you know, as, and especially when there's big jobs going on, it can add up quick until, you know, the utility companies or the paving companies actually get around to paying, so.
Yeah, and I'll ask one more, and I know this one has gone around a little bit too, but I know the, the Board of Health has been wondering about their two hundred dollar balance or something in their expense account. So my question is, it looks like we aren't drawing down very much on our Sharps money. Can they shift that money from Sharps to expenses? Because they've only spent a hundred and ten dollars for the quarter on Sharps so far.
Two ways to transfer funds from, and never mind if we had a revolving fund, which is currently zero, but two ways to transfer funds. From July through April, you can transfer funds via a town meeting article and vote. In May and June, at the end of the fiscal year, it can be done by a vote of both the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
So it's a town meeting issue, then?
Correct.
So Ed, can they technically overspend the expense account and reconcile it at the next town meeting or at the end of the fiscal year?
Technically, technically, my answer would be no.
No, you can't overdry your budget.
Right, but, well, it's overdrawing a line item versus a, the total budget, but we do that all the time. That's why we reconcile at the end of the year, because several line items are overdrawn, and we even do it between departments.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm surprised that we would have to do a town meeting to transfer within a department from one line item to the other.
Me too. We reconcile every year at the end of the year.
Yeah, I really? I thought we did it all the time.
When?
That we transferred within the same department from one line item to another.
Only at the end of the fiscal year, yeah, only in
Yeah.
Right, but during the fiscal year, the departments overspend individual lines, and that's you have to need at the end of the fiscal year to reconcile the line.
Right, because Vicki always does that list of transfers.
The end of the fiscal year, that's May and June.
Right, but she does it because people have overspent individual lines during the fiscal year. That's the point of that transfer.
Right, understood.
Budget practice we want to advocate for, frankly. I think that sometimes things happen where they're unaccounted for, and there might be an increase in, you know, police overtime because of something that wasn't predictable or something. I don't, I don't think it's a budget practice we wanna
No, definitely not.
I, I don't say it's a practice, but if it's a need, and it's an emergency, you know.
Well, anyway.
Any other questions about the expense or revenue report? Okay, so let's move on then, a lot of items here. The Open Space and Recreation Plan, I think the holdup is the ADA thing that PDPC is waiting for. Is that on its way, Ed?
Yeah, Judy, Judy's finishing up the last few of them for me, since I had some formatting issues, so she should be, she should be done with those in a couple of days, but I delegated it off to her. Because it's just taking me too much time.
Okay, so can we say by next week it'll be off to PVPC?
Yes, it will.
Great, okay, because then they, then there'll be a number of steps to publicize this and get community feedback on the Open Space and Recreation Plan. The next is the Municipal Preparedness Planning Grant, which is supposed to be kind of picked up. I think the first step for that is to assemble a group of people to assist Fuss and O'Neil, Fuss and O'Neil in determining a project for this grant that was awarded. Am I right on that?
Well, it's not just a, it's a project, it's a, it's an actual exercise that the team will go through that's similar to the process that we went through with the OSRP update. And there will be community outreach that goes along with this. There'll be a survey that goes along with it, along with it also. And what they recommend for a core team at least, and then it can branch out from that, but the core team consists of, if they're willing to do it, conservation, someone from the health field, someone from highway, planning, emergency management. If someone's willing to represent the Select Board on it. And then also one or two exterior I should say residents, which are outside of the town departments. And then they, they recommend that core team be about four to eight people.
Okay. I know that there were a couple of people on conservation. First of all, I think that part of this is heavily focused on emergency management. It's, and also climate change, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So clearly, we should, you know, I think we, we've had this on the agenda, and we've been sort of saying that this is a group, people have to get together and work together with the company that got the grant on our behalf. So why don't we just start making it happen? Can you put out a call for people who might be interested in being on this group? Since we're close to having the Open Space and Recreation Plan. I know there's a couple of people on conservation, Chris. Brittany possibly, and a couple of people that are very familiar with the MVP grant. I'm just wondering if, if you can bring that maybe to conservation, say we're recruiting members or Marla can or something?
Sure, yeah. No, I would think, yeah, there might be the Britneys or the Annabreenes, a couple of those folks might be, might be interested, yeah.
So if you, if there has to be representation from certain committees, can we reach out to those committees and say that this, we're ready to get this group, and can they nominate a member?
I can take care of that, as long, as long as the Select Board's good with that.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Do, do folks want to step up and be a representative from the Select Board, or you want to just wait until a call goes out and we get an update?
Let's wait and see what we get for, for a committee together, if we're needed. I mean, if you got Concom Health Highway Plan and Emergency Management and another resident, that's six right there, so.
I think there are four core in addition to the representatives from committees. Am I right about that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
What's that?
Are there four core members, and then the other folks are representative from committees?
No. Four to, four to eight people for the, the core team.
Oh, total.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah. But I can, I can let it be known at, at Concom anywhere, I'll, I'll let it, let Marla know if she's not listening, she's probably listening. And she can reach out to her members and see who's available, and they'd nominate somebody at the next meeting, most likely.
Yeah, and I think Charlie is, it's a big EMD thing too, so I think that would be good to include him. Just until it's officially posted. Any other recommendations from the committee on the MVP grant? Has there been any communication with the folks at Fuss and, Fuss and O'Neil?
Yes, we, we do communicate
Okay.
Back and forth.
All right, let's, let's just get going and putting that together, I think.
Yeah, would this likely be in an evening meeting, Ed, or would it be a, you know, some people that are working, they might want to be on it, but they couldn't do it during the day, or vice versa, I don't know. What would this be normally as a kind of a meeting time?
I think this will be similar to the OSRP, late afternoon, early evening.
Okay, all right. And maybe beginning in the first half of November or something, or?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll let Concom folks know.
Great. Next is approval and signing of accrued vacation pay for the Assistant Treasurer Collector due to resignation, so I think
Randy, could you lean closer to the microphone? You're fading away.
Okay, the next item is the approval of the accrued vacation time for the Assistant Treasurer Collector. And I believe we have paperwork on that. I think it's sixty-two hours, if I'm not mistaken. So we just need to approve the payout for vacation for the resignation of Robin Richard.
Yes, it's sixty-two hours. It totals one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
If it meets all our personnel policies, I make a motion we pay it out.
I'll second.
John and then Francine, any further comments, questions? All in favor?
Tishman eye.
Paul's eye.
Bart eye.
Roden eye. I guess Matt
We lost Matt for a minute.
And I'll just, I'll just remind you, this document requires a majority of the Select Board signatures, so I'll be looking to get those also.
Okay. Matt, that was the vote to approve sixty-two hours of vacation payout for Robin Richard as part of, you know, as her resignation.
Yeah, I heard that, and I, and I am eye on that.
Okay, all right, so it's unanimous. The next item is the posting of the Town Accountant Position.
And they're here for your information. John and I worked on this, and there are two of them. One for an interim Town Accountant, in case we can't find someone to fill this slot permanently for the beginning of October. And the other, the second one is for the permanent Town Accountant Position.
Hey, those were in our packet also. Does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
I'm assuming these are pretty much the standard description that, that we've had. Is there anything new that we need to worry about? Requirement wise or anything?
No, shouldn't be.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing is getting it posted ASAP.
Yeah, I agree.
Is that something that if we approve it, could be on the front burner, Ed, and get this going as soon as?
Yeah, it's already been, it's already been sent to PPPB, and I've put it in the works to get it posted already.
Okay. All right, we, I don't think we have a motion yet to approve that. Did anybody get a chance to look at it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, actually, at this point in time, the, the Select Board had actually given the direction to John and I to go ahead and form this last time. So probably, I would say, the board really doesn't need, or shouldn't say need, I should say probably doesn't, isn't required to vote on the actual PRFs till they go through the PPP process and Finance Committee and come back to the Select Board.
Well, can we prove it based on approval by Finance and PQB? I mean, I Well, can we prove it based on approval by Finance and PQB? I mean, I think it's important to get this posted as soon as possible.
Right.
I mean, ideally there'd be overlap, but that, I can't imagine that's going to end up happening. So when does PQB meet, Francine?
They're meeting Thursday.
And Finance already met. So can we at least approve it based on approval by PQB?
Yeah.
You could.
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan, yeah.
Yeah.
Make that motion then?
Yeah, I move that we approve the PRF.
Yeah.
For the interim as well?
For the interim and for the permanent. You know, based on the approval by the PPPB.
Yep.
So that it can be posted soon as?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I just, the only question I had is about Finance. Are we saying that they should be included also?
For a PRF, yes, but I can ask them if they can meet next week just to do that.
Okay, so the, should the motion include pending approval of Finance and PQB?
Yes.
Do we have a second on this already?
No.
No.
Let me second for a discussion. So if we're going to convene the Finance Committee next week for their approval, that means this is not getting posted till next week.
That's too late.
It waits, it's, it's too late now.
I know.
Yeah, I'd like to make it approval by the PQB. I'd just like to make sure that they have a chance to look at it and then have it be posted by the end of the week.
Now, the job description wasn't changed at all.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what the PQB would have an issue with, but, so I would get it ready to post for Friday pending PQB approval on Thursday night.
I'm all for that.
Yeah, that's, sounds fine, yeah.
And the other question that came up last night is what, we have the ability to get an emergency hire in situations.
Right.
I mean, to me, that we should have somebody on board, working with Vicki now, can we go to an agency and get somebody and get that person starting next week so we'll have coverage for at least a week?
I, I, I thought that that's what we had already talked about last time, and I thought that that was some of the things you and Ed were going to do in the interim.
It, it was, but we looked at this on October 8th.
Right.
So yeah, I thought the emergency was going to be out there too.
Well, I think that.
We can, we can do the, we can do the emergency hire once it's posted.
Right, you don't have to have the, that can be, that can precede an emergency PRF.
But what do we need, what do we need to go find, like, somebody from a temp agency? Is that what we want to do? Is that what you're saying, John?
If we need an emergency, an interim, the same thing, you know? We may end up getting somebody from a temp agency, we may end up getting somebody that comes in off an ad, I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, and that could be pretty quick, I mean, I've worked for companies where we had temps come in to do either administrative assistance or reception or even, you know, leadership positions. I, I think that's the whole point of it, that they start like ASAP.
Yep. And, you know, if Joyce was going to be here, that may be something else, but we're going to be without an accountant.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we do need to look into getting somebody as soon as possible. So there's a motion and a second on the floor, and it's basically to approve the posting of the town accountant position pending approval by PQB. So this could be posted as soon as possible and somebody could be hired on an emergency basis. And then the, the PCF could be, PRF could be approved by us and the other departments after the fact.
Can I just add, you said as soon as possible after the PQB season, I like to say Friday after PQB, you know?
Yep.
If we can get it posted Friday so we can, people can look at it and, you know, all that stuff too.
Yep.
Well, and if we get it out on social media as well, too.
Right.
And I've already been asking around.
Okay.
So.
So for, for an emergency one, we don't necessarily have to have a resident of town?
We don't have to have a resident.
No, no.
No.
Okay.
Does the person have to be a resident of town for the permanent position?
No.
No, okay.
But you can, two weeks, right? I mean, you can get an emergency person in there without approval of, you know.
Of anyone, except for the department, right, two weeks.
Two weeks, right. Yeah, so I think it should be, I think it'll be, we should, you know, get that out on Friday. Looking to an emergency person next week.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion and second, do you want to talk about anymore or are you ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
This for mine.
Falls I?
Mark die.
Roland die, I said I.
So it's unanimous. So, yeah, I think the sooner we get somebody in that position, the better.
Yeah, just, just so you know, when we get to the PCFs, Joyce will be coming back.
Yeah, good, I saw that.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that leaves us with the town parking lot plowing and sidewalk clearing requests for quotes. Request to sign off on a contract, and the question came up, are we getting any bids for this? And that's what we're wondering what the update is on that, Ed.
Yes, Randall put together the specs and I'm turning that into a request for quotes and we'll, we'll have that turned around and out there beginning of next week or the end of this week.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, cross our fingers we don't get early snow.
Halloween's coming. No, that's fine.
Okay, any other necessary business that cannot wait until the next regular November 5th select board meeting? Anybody have anything?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to say something about the new truck.
Yeah.
Be awesome if we somehow get that out close to the fire station or close to Town Hall on Election Day with a sign on it that says, "Thank you voters," or something like that.
Great idea.
That'd be nice.
It's a good idea, yes.
Great.
I think it'd be great. You know?
Yep, good idea.
Great idea, yeah.
It's been a long time coming and it's right before the winter season, it's a good message to send, I think.
There is. Ed, is that something you want to reach out to Chief Workman or would you like one of us to help you with that?
Or Randall, Randall.
I'm sorry, yeah, Randall I meant.
Yeah, actually Randall's supposed to, was supposed to go this week and actually go through the, the new truck. Once it had gotten back to the Westfield dealership. It had been down in Eastern Mass being outfitted with the body, so they asked him if he stopped down once they got it back, supposedly this week, and go through it to make sure everything is fine before we take possession of it.
Great.
I just have one question. You know, when Mike Rosenberg came and spoke about East Street, we had the presentation by John Furman from VHB, it did make me, you know, think a lot about East Street, it is a major corridor and 2025 is a long way away. I know there is some earmarked funds, federal funds. Are there any opportunities that you might be aware of, Ed, where any part of that project could be done prior to that?
Not that I am aware of, but I'll check on it.
Is it worth reaching out to some of our representatives and Senator statewide?
Yeah.
I, I don't think so, but let me, let me find out. Personally, I think if we're going to do anything to that as an intermediate step, we're going to have to do it ourselves, after, out of chapter 90 money is to do, like a thin overlay or what have you.
Okay, well, I, I think you addressed that last time, that, you know, he has to put his money where it's going to have the most benefit. I think East Street is a little bit more, you know, further down the, you know, further down the road in terms of needing repairs, so I don't think he was thinking that was the best use of his money.
Right.
Yeah, it does stink, it does stink to sink any money into that, it, it needs it terribly, but, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and don't forget when the Senator reached out to us to ask if we had any transportation improvement priority of requests, I had actually, and only had about two hours to respond, I had responded that $370,000 to purchase the actual right of way for the greenway. And I think it was $400,000, or no, it was $500,000 for the design of the East Street roadway, and somehow that turned into $870,000 to be used for the greenway.
Oh, interesting. Well, I'm looking forward to the presentation by the Master Plan Committee, because I think that it'll be interesting to see what the residents of town have expressed an interest in priorities. But that, you know, that, that wasn't one of the asked, I just thought I would just, it is, it's bad and it's getting worse, and if there's an opportunity to do anything to fix it prior to 2025, that'd be great.
Yeah, it's only going to get worse during the winter too, I mean, all the frost heaves and whatever else too, and potholes. I don't know, it just seems like there, it would be nice if there was some interim something that we could be, be doing, but. Another follow-up, sorry, since Ed, you mentioned the, the notice of the, the possible award from, from Velas' part. Lindsay Sabadosa had announced at some point that we'd gotten some money too, right, as part of a partnership with some other towns? Have we heard anything about that?
Well, we did get the money for the small business help, which is posted on our website.
Yeah, I thought there was a second one though too, and, no, was there only one? I thought there were two.
Well, you had said there was two or that she claimed there was two, but we only got one.
Okay.
We should follow up.
Yeah, and as far as the bridge, I'm assuming we're, you know, it's basically going to be a couple of months until we get the license and you'll let us know when that happens, right?
Correct, and hopefully we'll be pleasantly surprised and we'll get a surprise before two months is up.
Yeah, that would be nice. Okay, you ready to go over the PCFs? Francine, you're our representative for PQB.
Sure, we have a PCF for Brennan Struthers, firefighter EMT. It's a non-benefited position. It's, let me get this, make sure they're in order, sorry. I want to look at the actual. Anyway. If we look at the actual PCFs, okay, yeah, and it's for $17.10 an hour. Part-time, not, yeah, non-benefited, okay. The next one is also from the Fire Department for a firefighter, Tyler Alberti. For part-time firefighter at $11 an hour, number of hours per week is on an as-needed basis. The next one is PCF for Sabina McCarty, for the Assistant Town Clerk position, is part-time, non-benefited at $16.30 per hour. The next position, the next one is the PCF for Robin Richard, it's her resignation from the, as Assistant Treasurer from the Treasurer Collector Department, last day of work is November 12th. I'm sorry, last day of work is, is, is October 15th, her last date on the payroll because of the payout is November 12th, sorry, didn't mean to confuse you. The next one is for the town accountant, Vicki Morrow, resignation effective 10/30 October 30th. So that's only, that's the next, next week, so we have to, hopefully we'll, we'll get someone in the interim quickly. Then the next one is the resignation for Joyce Skypek from her current position as Assistant Town Accountant in the Accounting Department, that's effective October 29th, 2020. And then, thank goodness, immediately following that is a PCF for her to come back on as a part-time, non-benefited on, on an as-needed basis for $19.28 per hour. And that is effective, I think, November 1st, if I'm correct.
No, December 1st.
December 1st.
So.
And I've, I've got a question before you go into a motion on these, is I haven't seen a PRF for the Assistant Accountant's position.
Yeah, so once there's a resignation, there has to be a posting after. The position has to be posted before anyone is hired for that. I mean, I think it's great to keep, you know, the Assistant Accountant now in there to keep the knowledge and to keep things moving, but there really needs to be a PRF to initiate the posting.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking. I'm looking on the form and I don't see an effective date, that's why, and I just assumed, I don't know why, I said November 1st, that's what I thought I had heard.
It's, it's.
It's, it's on the top, I see it, it's, it's the 12th, it's December 1st. Wow, so we have a whole month, we have a whole month gap to fill there.
Yes.
Yep.
Ed, you wanted to say something?
Oh, I, I, just the comment that, you know, here, here's the PCF, but I don't remember seeing the PRF to actually request to post the position, so I was wondering what had happened to that.
Are you asking me? I, I told, I've been to one meeting, I don't know.
I mean, is that something that Vicki should have done or should do at this point?
Well, I, I also wonder if maybe it made it to the PPPB and they have approved it, but it didn't make it back to me, so let me, I'd like to check with the PPPB.
That's possible, because I did a PRF to post my position and it was approved by PPPB, but that also didn't make it back to Ed. So I'm not sure why.
One other, one other quick question on the, I don't have it in front of me, but I think I noticed on the Assistant to the Town Clerk, wasn't that a, didn't it say an emergency hire up at the top of that?
Yes.
And I was wondering, is, I mean, is that just for two weeks or is that? Isn't, isn't that more permanent now? Moving from, this is a person who was an election worker now being proposed as the Assistant to the Town Clerk, right, so why is it an emergency? I mean, I just don't want to be limited by two weeks, that's my only question, really.
Well, as, as an emergency, it would be allowed to start immediately after the PPPB approved it and didn't have to wait for the select board approval.
Okay.
And the emergency is only good for two weeks and it's non-benefited.
Right.
Versus a regular regular one which has to go through all the process of PPPB approval and select board approval and that, and at that point, if it happened to be 20 hours or more, it could be benefited.
Right, but does this, does this start like, does this start like with tonight's approval and then it goes for two weeks, which basically just sort of gets us through the election?
Well, usually what you, we would see with those is you'd see an emergency, so they can start immediately, but you'd also see a regular.
This, this does not, this does not say emergency on it, this is part-time, non-benefited.
Okay, then, then it's not an emergency.
Then my mistake, I, I swore, I saw something at the top of the, I don't have it in front of me, but at the top of the, the page somewhere, so my mistake, sorry.
I mean, at the top of the page, there's a box, if it's an emergency hire, but if the box isn't checked, it isn't.
Okay, mis, misread on my part, sorry.
Okay, we still have a motion and we have a second, I believe. I've kind of lost.
I don't think so.
Maybe we didn't have a motion yet, okay. I, I thought you said by, before you actually. Maybe we didn't have a motion yet, okay. I I thought you said by before you actually make a motion. Um so would somebody like to make a motion to approve uh all the PCFs?
I'll move.
Are you approving all of them or all except Joyce Sipek's?
What's that with Joyce's?
Yeah.
That's what we just said.
But it's gotta be.
It says emergency?
No, 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 the other, the Jen was talking about.
Yeah, we have, we haven't seen the PRF posted yet.
I see, yeah. But is it listed? Oh, okay.
No.
Well, I'll just step out of this. Would someone like to make a motion?
All right, I I move to approve all of the PCFs with the exception of um Joyce's Joyce Skypek's uh interim assistant. Accountant, I mean, we should accept her resignation, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, the exception to that one, then.
All right, Matt and then John, any further discussion?
What I'll do is uh Ed, will you get in touch with Vicky about initiating the PRF?
And it's. My my first thing is, well, like Jen said, she had sent one in for uh her posting.
And it hasn't come back.
And it hasn't come back, so I'm I'm gonna reach out right to the PPBB and see, okay, did 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 these things get lost or what have?
Cause if you could, yeah, if we can do that tomorrow, then it will have it in time, hopefully for Thursday's meeting.
Right.
We add to the agenda. Okay.
All in favor?
All right, Tish for nine.
All's eye.
Roll and I.
Brodenine, I think if in fact it's Joyce isn't gonna be starting until the December, I feel all the more strongly that we should get um. A temporary person in next week if possible. I don't know what your experience, Ed, but you know, we're up, we've had hired people from all kinds of temp agencies from nursing to MSG to. You know, administrative, so I'm sure there is a, are you familiar with any um companies that do have interim temporary people?
I know of Robert Half. I don't know of any others that may be in the area you might recommend.
No, Johnson and Hill in Springfield, uh you could call to.
Who is that?
Johnson and Hill in Springfield.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that we definitely need somebody in there next week if she's done um.
Yes.
Friday and Joyce isn't starting until December. That's a big gap. And it would be good to overlap with Vicky as much as possible.
Yes.
Yeah, and who made, who made the last motion?
Uh Matt and John seconded it.
Thank you.
Okay, ready to move to the warrants, Chris?
Yep, okay, we've got um a vendor warrant, W twenty-one fifteen. In the amount of sixty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. A payroll warrant, twenty-one, sorry, P twenty-one sixteen for the amount of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. And a payroll deduction warrant, P D twenty-one sixteen in the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred and six dollars and eighteen cents.
Any questions about the warrants?
No.
Uh Francine?
No.
Okay, I just want to go back because we did actually skip over an uh agenda item and it was COVID nineteen update. We did have our usual every two-week meeting with Police Fire E M D Board of Health or Health Director. There is an uptick of um a daily increase of four cases in Southampton. What other updates would you like to provide, Ed, on COVID nineteen?
Uh basically, I just wanted to uh come back and say that, you know, Police Department. Uh everyone's healthy, they're in good supplies, same with the fire EMS, both uh on the state level, the numbers are starting to, are continuing to rise. Yeah, and we did see that or hear about that uptick uh in uh our local uh numbers, so. You know, people should still be vigilant, uh practice social distancing, wear their masks, um you know, wash, wash their hands. So, you know, as as we move into the cooler weather and people are starting to move inside with not as much either space or airflow. It should be continue to to stay cautious and uh, you know, I did cover the other other part of it, I uh. When uh was able to read the uh the Halloween uh advisory from CDC that. Uh the Board of Health and the uh the Police Chief were recommending with the townspeople follow.
Okay.
I'd just like to reiterate that I would hope Parks would take advantage of their money and make some signage.
Well, well, let me go back to the fact that I don't even know if Parks knows that money is there because.
I've reached out to them twice. I hadn't told them.
Well, still, they didn't request it, you know.
But they know that, but they they know it's there, yeah.
Yeah.
But now, now's the time to get some signage made as far as I'm concerned.
Francine?
Yeah, I just have a question. Do we ever get any data on the number of contact tracings? I mean, just because I wanna know in this universe of Southampton. How many people have been potentially exposed? That puts it in context for me. Does it for not for anyone else? Or is it just?
Well, I think that that's a question to ask the Board of Health. I mean, they, the Maven program is the online program. Where when somebody's identified as positive, they have to reach out to that person and find out who their contacts were within a certain period of time. They have that data and I think that that is data that they're allowed to have in the Board of Health. They're not obligated to report out. The state reports out by county and also by town, but it's, it's so hard to know. I mean, people could from Southampton could. You know, get it in a nursing home outside of the town.
That that that's my question. I'm I'm hoping that this this database is a repository so that you could sort by zip code, let's say.
Right.
Regardless of where they came in contact, the fact remains that they were identified, they are. They are potentially is, you know, and they are Southampton residents, and I don't know if that's meaningful information or not. I'm I'm. I'm not just kind of musing here. I I think that it is in the in the whole scheme of things to start to understand the magnitude. Whether or not that means anything uh diagnostically, I don't know, but but.
I think that's a question that you can certainly pose to the Board of Health and um ask for an answer to that. How many people. Were paying money out of our CARES Act Fund for contact tracing? How many uh contact tracing. Have been done each month? We're paying a stipend on a monthly basis. I think it's a very reasonable question. What I do. What I do know is that Southampton's a bedroom community, which means people sleep here, which means that people mostly work in Northampton, Westfield, Springfield. You know, East Hampton and so there's only, there are limitations to data when it comes to um exposure, so. But I think that you can ask whatever information you request of the Board of Health, and I think that just like anybody asking us questions, you know, we. It's part of our meeting is to respond to correspondence.
Right, it it wasn't, yeah.
Answers frankly.
Yeah, I mean, it may not be a tracing that was done by our person because it may, you know, the contact, as you said, may have occurred in Springfield. So whoever does their follow-up would be doing it. I'm just saying in terms of numbers.
Right.
From this database, we should be able to get some information.
I agree. I agree. And I'm happy as a liaison to the Board of Health to actually pose that question in writing. I have had some difficulty getting answers.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm happy to do that.
I I I posed that question in an email last week and I have not received any responses of you.
I'm not asking for names, numbers, that's all.
Yep, absolutely, and that's been a request of yours in the past, so I will try to get an answer to that. Okay, uh so now we're up to minutes to approve. We have two sets of minutes, both from July. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at those?
Yes.
Okay, um would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of July sixteenth and July twenty-first, twenty twenty.
I'll second it.
Okay, Francine and then Chris, any comments about the motion minutes, any edits?
I noticed a couple of typos here and there, but nothing content much.
Do you want to just send those to off to Ed?
Okay, yeah, I don't have them in front of me. I'll send them.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so um all those in favor?
Tish for nine.
The fall's eye.
Roll and I.
Art nine.
And Road nine. Ed, are there any updates on uh dog complaint? Um or actually, since uh Chief Hillingsworth is still here, if he has anything he wants to say about the. Dog complaint, which is still, does it need to still stay as a pending item? The Green Communities Grant, we talked about the Charter Building. We haven't had anything on lately, the Clearwater Woodland Boundary and the short-term, long-term disability. There was a comment that was made about the long-term disability, that there were a couple of uh inquiries. They weren't bids, though. They were just inquiries.
Yeah, at this point, uh we received a couple of inquiries and the way it's set up is that um. Anyone that has questions should send them to us. We will uh post the responses to all the questions on the website. There with the uh uh. Request proposals, uh and then, once that's done. Anyone that's interested, it could look at, you know, if they've asked questions, what the responses are, or if someone else has asked a. Question and what the response was to that, and then they would uh take that information and then um. Develop their proposal to the town and send it in.
And the vendor questions are due back on the twenty-second, I believe, which is Thursday.
Sounds sounds right.
Any other questions about the other pending items? Um Chief Hillingsworth, did you want to say anything about the dog complaint?
I'm not really quite sure which that's what you're referring to.
The white loaf, we had a number of uh, we actually had a public hearing about it and that's what, that's the um item that's on that agenda. It was ongoing problem with a neighbor complaint relative to white loaf.
I know there's been several citations issued, but.
So it's still a problem?
I can't say there's been one at least, probably, I don't think a citation has been issued in at least a month. So it seems slowed down.
Yeah.
So Chief, a citation, what does that mean other than what it says on the paper? Is there a fine attached to it?
A fine attached to it, and it's for a loose dog citation. We we uh under our purview, we can cite for a loose dog, so.
Have they paid these citations?
Um I usually get the update from uh the uh Town Clerk and some of them I I think have, but I don't think all of them have, and then what happens, it goes to a uh. A potential criminal disposition and we're at court. It's, everything's been held up that court because of COVID, though, so. Many of these these situations, especially something of this minor, is not gonna be addressed for a while. They're just starting to get back to jury trials, you know.
But the process is there, we'll catch up.
Yeah, I knew the news that said that some of the uh late notices, like the registrations on the dogs um are way down, but she hasn't really had the time to. Roll off on the late ones, so I think it's a lot of uh, a lot of things are being. Okay, so we have a select one meeting on the fifth and the seventeenth and it says December first and. Actually, the special town meeting, we don't have to have a rainy, so at this point, we have open time for the public. The Select Board reserves a portion of its meeting for public comment and encourages participation. By the public. Would anybody from the public like to speak?
Public.
Okay, so that's that. Do we have any correspondences, Ed?
No, and uh just that uh update on uh the correspondence that I given earlier on the uh. Email we had see received from Crystal Kane about that property on Madison Avenue that is across the street from our house on Buchanan Circle.
Also, we got an update from the Water Department that you read or from the um water water employee about the mandatory versus voluntary. So that's it. Uh does anybody have anything else before we um have a motion to go into executive session?
Just one quickie, since I see chief here. Um you guys are having your drug take-back day on Saturday, are you not?
Yes, we are.
So maybe just so the town residents know of that. I haven't looked at the Facebook page.
This afternoon, yes.
Great, okay.
And this types, it's not gonna be at the um Town Hall. It's actually gonna be at the Police Department. The location, we moved the location to the Police Department.
And and it excludes liquids, is that correct?
Liquids, that's correct.
Okay.
And needles, of course, yes.
Yeah, and that's in the in the morning, is it, or?
It's from ten AM till two PM.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I'll just add one other announcement since Tammy left, which I'm surprised at. Um Southampton Historical Society is organizing the first-ever Cemetery Walk, also on Saturday. Uh from three to five, uh and it's already been booked. It was by reservation-only kind of thing, uh groups of maximum of twelve and for twenty minutes um intervals. And so it's well-spaced out and precautions are being taken, but uh giving a little tour of some of our more colorful ancestors in town.
That's one.
Good.
You say it's already booked?
I, there may be some slots, but it had to be booked. People had to write in and and book a time, but there there may be some times open. Tammy would have known that if I. Don't know myself, but just check in with Tammy if if anybody's interested on that.
And what time is that?
From three to five, I believe, on Saturday.
Great, thank you. That would be interesting. All right, so at this point, I'll have a motion then to go into executive session.
Oh, would you read the reasons first, please?
Oh, right, yeah, you always have to remind me of that. Thanks. Okay, National General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A, Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. In an open meeting, if an open meeting may have a significant effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares public uh police officers, New England and Benevolent Police Association.
We're we're not gonna come back into open session, correct?
Thank you, we're not gonna come back into.
It takes a village.
Share the leadership, small fellow. Okay, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn and go into executive session.
I'll second.
Okay, so John and then Francine, Ed?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Tish for nine.
Fall's eye.
Roll and I.
Art nine.
Brodenine, do you want a couple of minutes or do you want a five minutes?
Yes, please.
There's a separate link uh to the executive session, um.
Yes, it is.
Join this uh the second Zoom. Thanks, everybody. See you shortly.
Thank you.
Bye.